Nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Nofo, on a strip of sandy soil, lies a county called Nofo.
Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming in early today for the special council meeting. Of course, Bill Jackson's in the back filming, so thank you, Bill. For those in attendance, if I could remind you just to put your phone on silent mode. And no approval of the agenda since the special council meeting. So with that, is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, I've motioned by Counsel Roberts and seconded by Counsel Van Passen that committee move into closed session at 2:07 PM to discuss matters pursuant to Sections 239, 2 C and F of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended as the subject matter pertains to proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. All those in favor? And that's carried.
On a strip of sandy soil, lies a county called Nofo. It's Ontario's south coast, you know, and it's surely not remote. If you pass through or spend the day or decide to call it home, you'll see why we love it here and are proud to call it our own. Nofo, nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Nofo, nofo, my northern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. With hard work, we build a dream that only will enhance good too. It's on display at our fall fairs and at all the festivals too. Erie beaches, Carrolliania forests, where the flower and dogwoods bloom. Patchwork fields and rolling hills, it's just the place for you. Nofo, nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Nofo, 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 you won't be a stranger long. On a strip of sandy soil, lies a county called Nofo. It's Ontario's south coast, you know, and it's surely not remote. If you pass through or spend the day or decide to call it home, you'll see why we love it here and are proud to call it our own. Nofo, nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Nofo, nofo, my northern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. With hard work, we build a dream that only will enhance good too. It's on display at our fall fairs and at all the festivals too. Erie beaches, Carrolliania forests, where the flower and dogwoods bloom. Patchwork fields and rolling hills, it's just the place for you. Nofo, nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Nofo, 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 you won't be a stranger long. On a strip of sandy soil, lies a county called Nofo. It's Ontario's south coast, you know, and it's surely not remote. If you pass through or spend the day or decide to call it home, you'll see why we love it here and are proud to call it our own. Nofo, nofo, a southern county home. Nofo, nofo, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Nofo, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Nofo, on a strip of sandy soil...
If Canada has a heartbeat, that heartbeat is the Canadian farm. For over 150 years, Canadian farmers have faced the toughest conditions head-on with one goal in mind: to get food to your table.
Well, obviously, the farm is kind of a celebration of the hard work of our family. So as many farms are, they're kind of a staple of family unity, family work.
This farm's been in our family for about four generations, since the 1800s. So we've focused on orchard and asparagus. So we grow apples, tart cherries, and some pears.
I enjoy being part of business that impacts so many different families and really helps improve the quality of life for people.
My parents and I, well, we purchased the farm in 1990, but personally, been doing it for almost about 20 years on my own.
It sure is fun getting up in the morning and having something that's actually contributing.
Horticulture is a quarter of agriculture in Canada. And it's what you actually go to the grocery store and pick that apple, pick that cherry.
Healthy eating is a hot topic these days, so it just seems like we're involved in an industry that's really in the hip and the now.
We have a microclimate in Canada that we can grow almost all the different types of fruit and vegetables that we need.
It's hard work: tilling and planting and pruning and harvesting, working the land, and gambling that the weather gods will be kind.
Efficiency is absolutely critical. Attention to detail is absolutely critical. And to try and hire enough local people, we know, isn't possible. There's a huge labor gap, especially in horticulture across the country.
Most people don't understand agriculture as a whole. I don't think they understand how much work goes into production. A lot of it's physical labor, so it is a lot of us picking, packaging, like we package all of our cucumbers by hand.
The days are possibly gone of lots of people realizing the benefits of working outside, getting some fresh air, using their muscles.
The reality is that lots of local peoples, they don't want to work in the farm because everybody looking for other jobs, inside, indoor jobs, right?
We used to hire a lot of local teenagers. They simply weren't interested in working the long hours outside in the sun. They wanted, you know, short three-hour days and just three days a week. And then they were on vacation for the three weeks that strawberries were ready. So it just was really hard to schedule and manage all of that.
For the last half-century or so, a group of people from places like Guatemala, Mexico, Trinidad, and Jamaica, people like Shirvin, Nalini, Babu, and Joe, have come to Canada every year, stood beside our farmers and greenhouse operators, and made it possible for this extraordinary work to take place. And we've opened our hearts to them. That's just how it is in Canada.
If I didn't have access to labor from the seasonal agriculture worker program, I don't think I would be farming. You know, my last year farming without bringing in my employees from Mexico, man, I just, I was ready to give up. You know, just for my golden delicious. I went through 16 different people. You know, some people would say, "Oh, we'll be there tomorrow." They wouldn't show up. Other people would show up, but they would just be, you know, dropping the apples like crazy, turning them into juice.
So the temporary foreign worker programs are essential in filling that gap, but also because you have the opportunity to offer a person a contract the next year and they have the opportunity of whether or not they want to work for you again the next year. You've got that opportunity to have consistency of training, so you're not training a whole group of people every year.
It's the way the world functions. We have to compete in this country against a lot of offshore products that are manufactured, grown, whatever, in economies where the standard of living is nowhere near what we dream of and live in Canada. If I did not have international farm workers, I would not be here. It's that bad: reliable labor, period.
We're the Canadian Horticultural Council, and we want you to meet the workers who make our farms and greenhouses thrive and the Canadian farmers who are their hosts. So we're going to share some of those stories with you so you can find out what's going on down on the farm.
I'm asking him, what's the payment back in Mexico? He says maximum 200 pesos a day, which is equivalent to 12, 13 dollars for a whole day.
I started this program from 1988. And it took care of my family. My children to school. When I started it, I didn't know that I would be on it so long. But I started at a young age, and I grew on it. I have that love for this program.
It wasn't very complicated. We would apply for workers in the past, and it happened to be all men. Then one year, we get a phone call from the Trinidad office going, you know, "We'd like to know if you wouldn't mind having women on your farm." And we looked around, go, "Yeah, what do you mean? Would we mind?"
I love the farm, right? This is my first experience being on a farm. And for me, it is very nice being here. I got the opportunity to help my family, so it is really, really nice for me.
When I started in 2009, they was taking women. And before, they were saying they were only was taking men on this farm. But then he decided to take women, which I was glad to come here.
And I've learned to do different things, things that I never thought that I could do. But I think at this farm, you get a lot of opportunities, and it's up to you to take it and try new things.
This is like, people back home, we would say this is our bread and butter. When we say our bread and butter, this is what we do to gain money. So if it's ever taken away from us, we don't know where we will fall. We don't know where we stand. So I think this is a very good opportunity for us. And having us come to Canada every year, it does a lot for us Trinidadians.
And it's not all about working, because I did some courses too. Like first aid, to be on the field out here in case of somebody getting injured. I can assist. I got a certificate in it. And I learned how to drive a bus. So I'm trained to drive a forklift.
I think I have to prove myself to myself first, yeah, that I could do it. And then my employers would see that I could do it.
Working here, working in Jamaica, the difference is like the money. That is a huge difference, right? So when you have $1 a year, you have $97 back home in Jamaica. So when you have $1,000 here, it's $97,000 back home. So that make a big difference, right?
Like that, it's like when people from Nova Scotia go to Alberta. Like they just, they leave here, go to Alberta and make big money. Same with the guys from Jamaica. So it's like this awesome opportunity for them to make a bunch of money.
It's about a standard of living overall.
Thanks to this job here in Canada, he finished his house and he gave his daughter her dream, which was to have this big party of 15-years-old. That's like a dream for every 15-year-old girl. And many fathers start saving for that since they are babies, since the daughters are babies.
Well, and our team here, his name is Bobby. And his wife had called him earlier that week saying that the textbook bill had come in. And it was quite extravagant. It was going to be like 40,000 Jamaican dollars.
She texts me the cost for the book list. Yeah, and it's way more than I expected.
Big bill. But he was so thankful to say that he told her to go ahead and write the check and pay the bill because he has a job here in Canada that he could support his family back in Jamaica so they could do their post-secondary education and carry on.
The program here just make it simple, yeah. Yeah, I just thank God for this program that I could be able to pay his school fee off, pay his book list off, and have everything under control, yeah, yeah.
This is agriculture. Food production doesn't pay, doesn't have the margins enough to pay a lot of money. But for Mexican workers, I know that the impact of this money is a lot. It's big for their lives. Their kids go to good schools. Their kids will have opportunities. They will have small businesses. They will have better lives. And I can testify that every two weeks when they get paid, they go to send the money. And that goes to the wife, that goes to build the house, that goes to the expenses, or maybe to have some chickens, some pigs, whatever they need to do there with the help of their families in Mexico.
Few Canadians are aware of the fact that there is a career path for international farm workers. Just like in any other industry, hard workers who demonstrate skills, initiative, and leadership move from pickers to team leaders to supervisors. Many have brought their families here and settled. Some have even bought existing properties here in order to start a new life as Canadian farmers.
I started the program in 2009. I started out in the greenhouse as we all came here to do. I remember the greenhouse supervisor, he said to me, "You know what, Shirvin? I'm not going to send you to work in the warehouse ever because if I send you to the warehouse, they are not going to send you back over here." So he made the harsh mistake of sending me to the warehouse, and the rest is history. I started out as a packer there, and I gradually climbed up the chain. Now I'm the warehouse manager.
Shirvin is here. He's here alongside with his wife, Monique, who goes to school here. And he really has embraced our culture in itself. And Shirvin, this is where he'll start a family.
My workers are totally invested in my business. And we have an understanding that, you know, I have to be successful. And if I'm successful, they'll have more work. We can, we'll expand. We'll be leasing more orchards or buying more orchards. We can bring more workers, so it helps everybody.
The program is very regimented by the government in terms of what we have to do and how we have to do and what we have to report. And we have all kinds of regulations built around worker safety and employment standards and so on. It's reviewed every year by both the employers and the employees. So it is collective bargaining on issues of what's provided to workers at the workplace and how workers are treated. So a lot of thought and energies got into that from the Canadian government, from the foreign governments, and from the employers. So it's really, the onus is on the employer to respect that and to cooperate with the rules, and everything will go good for you.
Right now, I have, I think, about 60 worker from the program. And every year, that is growth. Every year, we get more and more.
So what we get from Jamaica are some really great, I call them highly skilled farm workers. They are professional farmers.
There's a lot of goodwill from people in the community who understand the value of this program to the community. And local business leaders definitely know what the economic impact is of this because for every $10 that I spend on a worker's wage, it has a ripple of effect of about $30 in the local economy. And there have been studies on that to verify that.
The economic spin-off that Leamington enjoys from the migrant workers being here is substantial. Our guesstimate is more along the $18 million a year in economic input into this community just from their shopping habits that they have. So when you look at the greenhouse industry as a whole, even our field farmers, where these migrant workers are working, it's more than just the greenhouse industry. It's all the spin-off industry that's really hard to put your fingers on. But it's in the millions. So it's been very good for our municipality. The spin-off to employment, whether it's the trucking companies, the packaging firms, a greenhouse operation employs so many people outside of the temporary foreign workers that it's huge in this community, for sure.
Yeah, we have guys that have come to us since we started. Now, since 2010, every year. And a lot of times, at the end of the day, you go out and you talk to them. And then five years ago, we started the baseball league in Leamington. And I did it just because I wanted to get to know them a little bit more just than always me as an employer and them as an employee. And that's why, you know, we went out on a Sunday afternoon, and they had nothing to do. And we got a couple of teams together and started playing baseball, so. That the migrant workers get to know the local people, the local people more of the migrant workers, and then just Sunday afternoon, have some fun. It got pretty serious. We got five teams now that we're playing every Sunday afternoon. And it's a lot of fun. And that's how we can share a lot of things. And they talk more of their, you know, personal things that they do in Mexico and what they have done in Mexico. Because when we started, I told them, I said, "We're all friends." We communicate via Wi-Fi pretty much every day. You know, I talk to my wife every day, and that's, you know, with the telephone. My daughter, my grandson. I video chat my grandson three or four times a week.
We have Wi-Fi. We can talk back, back to our Wi-Fi. And see my family, see my little kids running up and down. And say, "Daddy, daddy, when you coming back?" And say, "Daddy, remember you bringing that thing for me," you know?
Que hay una comunicación constante, ¿no?, tanto con la mujer, con los hijos, por la cosa más mínima que sea, darles sentir que tú estás ahí, que tú estás ahí para ellos, ¿no?, tanto para la mujer como para tu hijo, cualquier duda que tengan, te la puedan preguntar, sienten la confianza, no porque estamos a miles de kilómetros, ¿no?
Nosotros aquí desde la década de 2000, actualmente tenemos unas treinta trabajadoras extranjeras y son mexicanas, hemos tenido un trabajador que se llama Valentina que en el fondo tranquilamente ha llegado al inicio de la década de 2000 con nosotros, luego tranquilamente se dudó a través de la equipo, era alguien que tenía un cierto liderazgo.
He tomado la decisión de venir aquí con mi familia, primeramente porque yo he venido aquí hace aproximadamente nueve años, luego seis meses aquí, seis meses en México, eso es gratis porque estamos aquí solos, luego solos y no tenemos mujer, no tenemos hijos, no tenemos familia aquí.
Y Valentina, pienso que aquí es apreciado, es amado, pienso que ama realmente su trabajo aquí, está contento de la realidad y de la fiertad de lo que hace a nivel de su trabajo aquí, en realidad no fue un elevarse por él de repartir contratos y nos hablaba, tenía lágrimas en los ojos y no sabía qué elegir, luego un día nos llegó y nos dijo, bueno, es mi mujer y mis hijos que viven aquí, ¿sería correcto? Es una pantalla de gente que lleva culturas diferentes, que sea africana, que sea colombiana, mexicana, está abierto a la mundialización, también se da cuenta y pienso que solo puede aportar una apertura al mundo y Valentina ha sido uno de ellos.
Pues sí, es un gran cambio, aparte de que está muy bonito, el trabajo está, pues bien, aparte del frío, pues aquí adentro y pues está todo bien, sí, es una, es un gran cambio pero es para...
Para bien.
Para un mejor futuro. Para los niños, sí, mejor futuro para ellos.
También.
Así que algunas de las cosas que hemos hecho para apoyar a nuestros empleados han sido programas de yoga, los últimos dos años he tenido a algunos de mis maestros, Gina Wasseline y Mishra Swan de OSHA, venir y enseñar yoga básico para los empleados básicamente como una manera de lidiar con el trabajo strenuous, trabajo repetitivo, tomar herramientas de estas clases para poder hacer esto por sí solo, si dicen, ya sabes, mis muñecas están dolentes hoy, como tengo algunos stretching de muñecas que puedo llevar a casa y puedo hacer esto por mi cuenta. ¡Sí! Ustedes son increíbles, ustedes son increíbles. Y así hemos, hemos tenido estas clases accesibles y yo, ya sabes, giro a través de los empleados para asegurarse de que todos obtengan la oportunidad de hacerlos y aprendan lo que pueden de ello y vayan de ahí. Sí, eso es bueno.
Quiero decir, otra cosa que hacemos, hemos estado ejecutando una escuela aquí en la empresa, enseñando a los chicos cómo hacer, les están trayendo la literatura para los chicos y así y yo ayudo con eso por texto, antes no podía enviar un texto a nadie y ahora, ya sabes, lentamente estamos entrando en el texto y ayudándolos, ya sabes, como algunos de ellos tienen muy poca educación, así que matemáticas y así que todos sentamos y decimos, ya sabes, ¿qué quieres aprender?, matemáticas y escritura, hemos aumentado, este es el tercer año ahora.
Vimos a un ex trabajador cuyo hijo era de St. Lucia, pudo poner a su hijo a través de que se convirtiera en un doctor, bueno, ese hijo corrió por política y se electó y fue al primer ministro y dijo, quiero ser el ministro del trabajo porque quiero ser responsable del programa de trabajadores extranjeros, vio el beneficio porque vio el beneficio en su propia familia.
Los trabajadores de campo internacionales pagan impuestos, pagan en el plan de pensiones de Canadá y programas de seguros de empleo, también compran comidas, regalos y suministros para enviar a casa, participan en actividades sociales, comen en restaurantes. En comunidades donde hay una gran concentración de trabajadores de campo internacionales, su impacto es bastante significativo. Canadá es conocido por la generosa forma en la que contribuimos a la ayuda extranjera, enviando billones de dólares cada año a naciones en todo el mundo. El programa de trabajadores de campo internacional puede verse como ayuda extranjera directa.
Es el mejor programa de ayuda extranjera que Canadá tiene porque número uno, no cuesta el gobierno un dólar, número dos, ese dinero va directamente a las manos de las comunidades de trabajadores de campo, minimal costo, no costo el gobierno y que es el mayor beneficio directo al usuario final, y creo que eso es realmente, creo que eso es realmente malentendido.
Cada vez que hago un recaudo aquí sé que debido al número de personas que esos trabajadores están apoyando, estoy apoyando ocho y medio personas en Jamaica.
Bueno, cuando nos fuimos de Jamaica y vinimos aquí a trabajar en esta ferma, es mejor, es mejor para ti, es mejor para nosotros en Canadá porque ganas dinero para cuidar a tu familia.
Tiene 11 hijos en casa, tiene tres grupos de primos, su esposa había desarrollado cáncer cerebral cuando los últimos grupos de primos eran dos años y murió, perdió su casa, el arreglo que tenía, no tenía nada en papel para decir que ese era su, así que perdió donde vivía y está empezando de nuevo.
Trabajar en Canadá me ayudó a conseguir esto, esto, todo esto, el jardín de hierro que quería, ¿no?
Después de que Kevin haya perdido todo en su matrimonio anterior de 15 años, no sería tan rápido para él si no trabajaba en la ferma Morris, empezar de nuevo dentro de un espacio de unos pocos años o algo, sí, ha logrado este trozo de tierra y casa y si no fuera por la ferma Morris no podría haber sucedido porque trabajar en Jamaica es duro.
Kevin tiene un niño que tiene cinco años, que tiene anemia de SIC, dijo que le cuesta 500 dólares al mes por la medicación para mantener a ese niño vivo, dijo, sin este programa, jefe, dijo, mi niño muere, eso es lo que significa para Kevin Thomas.
Cuando el programa continúa, me ayudó a tener una mejor vida para mi esposa y mis hijos, porque el programa nos ayudó mucho, ¿sabes?, nos ayudó mucho, ¿sabes?
Y confía en mí, es como 8.000 dólares por un test de sangre, sí, y tenemos que ir a Kingston para hacer el médico, ahora pedimos para que vaya aquí ahora y lo siguiente es que van a cerrar la clínica en agosto, así que vamos a tener un poco de rato, pero gracias a Dios por el trabajo de Morris, sí, ese empleador, Mr. Murray, gracias, Dios lo bendiga.
Kevin Thomas quiere que el ministro sepa que este programa es importante para él, para su familia y para su hijo, ha estado comprando tierra y plantando café y manteniendo la cosecha para que pueda apoyarse cuando haya terminado el trabajo en el programa, pero durante los doce o más años que que ha trabajado aquí, ha hecho un gran trabajo, es un gran tipo de trabajo con el que trabajamos, realmente lo apreciamos y sabemos que estamos haciendo una gran diferencia en su familia.
Mr. Murray, no lo sé, pero te amo mucho, dije, Kevin, tienes el mejor jefe, Kevin, ven y dime algo sobre, me dice, sí, agradezco a Mr. Murray, te amo, Mr. Murray, sí, gracias por ayudar a mi esposo para que pueda cuidar de su familia, es un buen padre, es más que todo el resto, te amo también, Kevin.
Es una cultura diferente a la que es en Canadá, aquí intentas ir adelante, todo el mundo intenta ir adelante, mientras que en un país en desarrollo si alguien tiene que venir de su familia para trabajar en Canadá, entonces un hermano o hermana tal puede estar llevando sus cosechas o una hermana está buscando su cosecha, esas personas son todas parte del proceso, así que cuando esas personas envían dinero de vuelta a casa que están trabajando aquí, están enviándolo a su comunidad y la comunidad llega adelante, no los individuos, así que es una mentalidad cultural diferente.
Estos son de la familia para nosotros, para nosotros, trabajan junto a nosotros, tienen las mismas valores que nosotros, y a la fin de la jornada es realmente el placer de tener un amigo como eso, se vuelven absolutamente amigos, tengo un enorme respeto por estos tipos, es una inspiración para mí de ver lo que se ha logrado aquí en la ferma y en la casa para ellos. Jose ha llegado, tiene seis años ahora, le han dado herramientas para se valorizar un poco mejor, le han dado herramientas para llevarlo a Guatemala y luego subir su familia un poco, le daba aproximadamente la mitad de su salario en la iglesia y luego se dio cuenta de que dar la mitad de su salario a la iglesia no ofrecía absolutamente ningún beneficio a su familia en lugar de dar la mitad de su salario a la iglesia. Ha construido una escuela, la primera escuela secundaria en su país, su hija es la primera persona en su país a ir a la escuela secundaria que él ha construido.
Estas personas son mejores que yo, han luchado donde vienen, no han tenido las mejores cosas de la vida y han dejado sus familias, lo que es un sacrificio enorme venir aquí y ayudar a nuestra industria en Canadá.
Estas personas son tratadas bien, quieren estar aquí y ayudan a nuestra economía a prosperar y moverse hacia el futuro.
A nivel personal, quiero decir, soy un hombre, soy un hombre de personas.
Josh viene como, no viene como un jefe, viene como un hermano con nosotros, ¿verdad? Porque incluso cuando Josh viene a Jamaica, no va a un hotel, viene a nuestra casa, que no tiene vehículo, se preocupa por nosotros, Josh, solo respetamos a Josh.
Estos, estos tipos, ya sabes, hemos estado trabajando juntos durante 14 años y ahora he viajado allí este año, con suerte voy, será el año número cinco, así que como cada vez que voy a sus, voy a todos los hoteles, ya sabes, sé sus vecinos, sé sus hermanos, sé sus hermanos, sé sus hermanos, ya sabes, así que estoy invertido bastante en sus vidas personales y así me significan mucho.
Esto es humano, como, somos todos humanos, primero, ¿eh?, tenemos que, tenemos que cuidar el uno del otro, ¿sabes?, no importa cuánto dinero tengas, no te vayas.
Bueno, una de las mejores cosas para mí, como cada año que vengo aquí aprendo algo más, ¿verdad?, y venir aquí en la ferma me iluminó mucho de las cosas que estoy soñando, desde que he venido aquí he aprendido mucho.
y quiero decir, ellos son como, son familia.
Este programa es, es un cambio de vida para mucha gente, no solo en el Caribe, y sé que puedo decir si estás hablando con un mexicano, podrían decir lo mismo también, hay tanta oportunidad para estos tipos hacer algo de ellos mismos, pueden, pueden hacer cosas que normalmente no podrían hacer por sus familias, estamos agradecidos por la oportunidad.
Cuando entras a un país como un extraño y es tratado de la forma que nos tratan, ya sabes, honestamente no tienes mucho, no hay nada negativo, en otras palabras, así que no hay mucho para agregar o quitar de eso más que decir gracias por tenernos aquí y por darnos la oportunidad, ya sabes, de hacer las cosas que hemos hecho.
Al final del día, mientras la ferma se acerca y los jardines se cierran por la noche, las historias son expresadas una y otra vez por ambos trabajador y hoteles sobre creciendo amistades, sobre verdadera lealtad, sobre familia y futuro, sobre el corazón que crece más every day down on the farm.
En una grieta de tierra húmeda se encuentra una ciudad llamada Norfolk, es el surcoast de Ontario, lo sabes, y es realmente lejano, si pasas por o pasaste un día o decidiste llamarlo a casa, verás por qué lo amamos aquí y somos orgullosos de llamarlo nuestro propio. Norfolk, Norfolk, nuestra casa de county sur, Norfolk, Norfolk, sabemos que no puedes ir mal con el pueblo amigable de Norfolk, no serás un extraño más. Llevando la atmósfera de la pequeña ciudad, siendo sorprendido con todo lo que cultivamos, como nuestros hijos que van a ver el mundo y no pueden esperar volver a casa, echar una cuerda en un lago de placa o caminar por la costa, tomar una visita en una carretera de país pacífico y encontrar más para volver. Norfolk, Norfolk, nuestra casa de county sur, Norfolk, Norfolk, sabemos que no puedes ir mal con el pueblo amigable de Norfolk, no serás un extraño más. Con trabajo duro construimos un sueño que solo el deseo y la fuerza pueden hacer, está en juego en nuestras ferias de verano y en todos los festivos también, playas y bosques carolinianos donde la flor y los árboles azules, juzgados, campos y montañas rocosas, es solo el lugar para ti. Norfolk, Norfolk, nuestra casa de county sur, Norfolk, Norfolk, sabemos que no puedes ir mal con el pueblo amigable de Norfolk, no serás un extraño más. Norfolk, 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 no serás un extraño más. En una grieta de tierra húmeda se encuentra una ciudad llamada Norfolk, es el surcoast de Ontario, lo sabes, y es realmente lejano, si pasas por o pasaste un día o decidiste llamarlo a casa, verás por qué lo amamos aquí y somos orgullosos de llamarlo nuestro propio. Norfolk, Norfolk, nuestra casa de county sur, Norfolk, Norfolk, sabemos que no puedes ir mal con el pueblo amigable de Norfolk, no serás un extraño más. Llevando la atmósfera de la pequeña ciudad, siendo sorprendido con todo lo que cultivamos, como nuestros hijos que van a ver el mundo y no pueden esperar volver a casa, echar una cuerda en un lago de placa o caminar por la costa, tomar una visita en una carretera de país pacífico y encontrar más para volver. Norfolk, Norfolk, nuestra casa de county sur, Norfolk, Norfolk, sabemos que no puedes ir mal con el pueblo amigable de Norfolk, no serás un extraño más. Con trabajo duro construimos un sueño que solo el deseo y la fuerza pueden hacer, está en juego en nuestras ferias de verano y en todos los festivos también, playas y bosques carolinianos donde la flor y los árboles azules, juzgados, campos y montañas rocosas, es solo el lugar para ti. Landes, champs et collines roules, c'est juste le lieu pour vous. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Norfolk, 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 Norfolk. Vous ne serez pas un étranger. Sur une bande de sols secousses lie le county de Norfolk. C'est le sud-est de l'Ontario, vous savez, et c'est sûrement très loin. Si vous passez ou passez un jour ou décidez de l'appeler à la maison, vous verrez pourquoi nous l'aimons ici et sommes fiers de l'appeler à la maison. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Prendre l'atmosphère de petite ville, être surpris de tout ce que nous cultivons. Comme nos enfants qui vont voir le monde et ne peuvent pas attendre de retour à la maison. Mettre un fil dans un lac plastique ou parcourir la mer. Prendre une visite sur une route country calme et trouver des renforts pour plus. Avec du travail dur, nous construisons un rêve que seul le doigt peut accomplir. Il est à l'affichage à nos fêtes de fin d'année et à tous les festivals aussi. Des rives secousses, des forêts caroline où les fleurs et les arbres bleus. Landes, champs et collines roules, c'est juste le lieu pour vous. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Norfolk, 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 Norfolk. Vous ne serez pas un étranger. Sur une bande de sols secousses lie le county de Norfolk. C'est le sud-est de l'Ontario, vous savez, et c'est sûrement très loin. Si vous passez ou passez un jour ou décidez de l'appeler à la maison, vous verrez pourquoi nous l'aimons ici et sommes fiers de l'appeler à la maison. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Prendre l'atmosphère de petite ville, être surpris de tout ce que nous cultivons. Comme nos enfants qui vont voir le monde et ne peuvent pas attendre de retour à la maison. Mettre un fil dans un lac plastique ou parcourir la mer. Prendre une visite sur une route country calme et trouver des renforts pour plus. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Avec du travail dur, nous construisons un rêve que seul le doigt peut accomplir. Il est à l'affichage à nos fêtes de fin d'année et à tous les festivals aussi. Des rives secousses, des forêts caroline où les fleurs et les arbres bleus. Landes, champs et collines roules, c'est juste le lieu pour vous. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Norfolk, 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 Norfolk. Vous ne serez pas un étranger. Sur une bande de sols secousses lie le county de Norfolk. C'est le sud-est de l'Ontario, vous savez, et c'est sûrement très loin. Si vous passez ou passez un jour ou décidez de l'appeler à la maison, vous verrez pourquoi nous l'aimons ici et sommes fiers de l'appeler à la maison. Norfolk, Norfolk, un hôtel county sud. Norfolk, Norfolk, nous savons que vous ne pouvez pas mal. Avec le peuple amical de Norfolk, vous ne serez pas un étranger. Prendre l'atmosphère de petite ville, être surpris de tout ce que nous cultivons. Comme nos enfants qui vont voir le monde et ne peuvent pas attendre de retour à la maison.
Oui, je ne sais pas...
Salut.
Oui, donc, depuis que vous êtes dans la chaise, voulez-vous quelqu'un d'autre pour le lire?
Je vais juste le lire et...
Bien sûr, oui.
Je vais le déplacer pour Amy. Tom?
Vous devriez probablement lire ce qui est prévu pour nous deux.
Oui. Peut-on seconder cette motion? Ok, bienvenue à nouveau, tout le monde. J'ai juste une motion qui a été déposée par le conseil Van Passen et secondée par le conseil Rabbit. Le comité réconventera en session ouverte à 3h10 PM. Tous en faveur? Et c'est déposée. Et la motion avant moi a été déposée par le conseiller Martin et secondée par le conseiller Michelle. Que le débat 2019-89 soit amendé comme suit. Une, que le... Oh, mes apologies, je n'ai pas tout le truc devant moi. Ok, étant un débat interne pour la corporation de Norfolk County selon la section 38 de l'Acte de planification, amendé pour appliquer aux terres généralement décrites comme les zones urbaines de la frontière des rivières, la zone de settlement Ward 6. Où le conseil de Norfolk County est autorisé à exécuter ce débat par virtu des provisions de la section 38 de l'Acte de planification RSO 1990. Le deuxième débat, ou bien "où" comme imprimé, sera supprimé et il sera lu comme suit. Et où le conseil de Norfolk County dirige une analyse et étude qui assistera à l'exploitation des terres de planification et de servissement dans la région waterfront de la zone de settlement Ward 6. Et le troisième "où" sera maintenant ajouté pour lire comme suit. Et où la county de Norfolk a une carence en capacité d'eau en Porte Dover pour laquelle une solution n'a encore pas été déterminée. Maintenant, donc, le conseil de la corporation de Norfolk County exécute comme suit. Que pour le but de ce débat, les bâtiments et structures auront le même sens que dans le débat de zoning 1Z 2014 amendé de temps en temps. Deux, que ce débat appliquera à toutes les terres indiquées dans la planification A de ce débat attachée ici et qui peut généralement être décrite comme les zones urbaines de la zone de settlement Ward 6. Que sans doute aucune autre débat contraire, personne ne pourra utiliser les terres identifiées dans la planification A pour n'importe quel but, sauf pour une utilisation qui existait légitime à la date de l'exécution de ce débat, tant que ça continue à être utilisé pour tel objectif. 3B sera maintenant supprimé et amendé... Il sera amendé à supprimer les mots "est un résultat". Donc il sera permis de construire ou d'augmenter n'importe quel bâtiment ou structure, sauf et excepté si la construction, l'alteration ou l'extension nécessite aucune nouvelle servissement. Désolée, je suis juste suivant ici avec nos changements. Numéro 5, si nous skippeons, nous continuons. Les plans de site, la subdivision et les applications de condominiums sont actuellement en processus à la date de l'exécution de ce débat qui est complètement en accord avec le débat de zoning approvu. Deux, permettre une piscine, arrière-jour, fenêtre, pente, accessoire, bâtiment temporaire ou renovation interne à un bâtiment existant. Trois, un comité d'application de correction qui est exempté de la débat interne indiquée dans la section 45-1 de l'Acte de planification. Et quatre, ce sous-section 4 sera ajouté au débat 2019-89 pour lire comme suit et le balance renommé de manière conforme. Et que les exemptions suivantes, indiquées dans la planification B, qui n'était pas inclue, seront exclues du débat. Et la planification B sera la suivante. ZNPL 2019-249, qui est Robert Lawrence. OPNPL 2019-014, qui est Porte Dover Development Inc. 0PNPL 2019-256 et ZNPL 2019-257, qui est Pretty Smart Holdings. Et quatre, et toutes les autres applications qui ne nécessitent pas de nouvelles services d'eau. Donc encore une fois, la motion a été déposée par le conseiller Martin et secondée par le conseiller Michelle. Quel discussion sur la motion? Conseiller Martin?
Merci maire Chop. Je pense que ce débat traîne sur les spécifiques du processus de planification inclus et non inclus, ainsi que l'intention et le but pour identifier un plan plus large pour le développement de Porte Dover et prendre advantage de la situation tragique que nous avons actuellement avec notre moratorium actuel. Il inclut aussi dans la planification B la clause supplémentaire où les applications de planification qui meettent les exigences seront ensuite traitées à ce moment. will then be dealt with at that time. So, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call the vote then. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, motion moved by Counselor Rabbits and seconded by Counselor Van Passen that bylaw 2019-89 be approved, signed by the mayor... Sorry, that bylaw 2019, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Okay, my apologies. Motion moved by Counselor Rabbits, seconded by Counselor Van Passen, that bylaw 2019-89 be approved, signed by the mayor and clerk, and affixed with the corporate seal. All those in favor? And that's carried? And I'm okay for this one now? Okay, and that bylaw 2019-90, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of Norfolk County at this special council meeting held on the 10th day of September 2019, be approved, signed by the mayor and clerk, and affixed with the corporate seal, moved by Counselor Van Passen, seconded by Counselor Rabbits. All those in favor? That's carried. And finally, motion that council be adjourned at 3:17 PM. Motion's moved by Counselor Rabbits and seconded by Counselor Van Passen. All those in favor? And that's carried. So part of the rush in my speaking was I had to be done by 3:15 for the public meeting, so we're right on the button. So, with that, we will open our public hearings. So this is our Public Hearing Committee meeting for September 10th, 2019. I'd like to remind everyone that our meetings are web-streamed and televised. And for those in attendance, I would ask that you ensure your phones are on silent mode, please. I'd also like to thank our camera volunteer in the back, who's with us every week, Bill Jackson, for being with us again today. First, approval and changes to the agendas. I have one noted. There is one change today to the Public Hearing Committee agenda, which is the withdrawal of item 3E. Staff report DCS 19-92, that's an application, ZNPL 2019-046, also known as the Meisner Landing Project, due to a non-decision appeal filed with LPAT. So, we actually, we will provide a couple of comments at that point on the agenda, but the application itself has been removed. So if I could have, if there's any other changes? If I could have somebody to approve the motion that the agenda be approved as amended? Counselor Taylor, and seconded by Counselor Huffman. All those in favor? And that's carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest on any of the matters? Okay. Seeing none, I will now officially open the public meeting held under the Municipal Act and the Planning Act for the purpose of hearing applications and proposals, and affording any persons in attendance the opportunity to make representation to the Public Hearing Committee. A reminder to those coming forward to address the Public Hearing Committee to please state your full name and address when you come forward to the podium. Those speaking on planning matters, please be advised that in order to preserve your right to appeal to the local planning appeals tribunal, you are required to make comments or provide written submissions prior to the passage of a bylaw. Given the number of people that are here tonight, we will also accept your name and address being printed on the paper, and that will be also sufficient to preserve your right to appeal. A reminder that we have new rules in place around public hearings, so we will be limiting speakers now to five minutes, unless you are the applicant or planner, in which case we will provide some leeway to you to present your full application. Speakers, also please be reminded that information presented cannot be repetitive in nature. Again, because we have so many people, if your neighbor's already said it before, if we could kind of just keep the process moving along for the evening. So, with that, the first report is staff report DCS 19-93, and this was in regards to an application that has been received to convert an existing garden suite to a permanent second dwelling. Timothy and Odilia Gillam have put forth the application affecting the lands described as 1328 Second Concession Road. And I will now open the public meeting upon staff report DCS 19-93 and ask Ms. Collier to present her report, please.
The subject lands are 9.75 hectares in size and front onto the east side of Second Concession Road, E N R, in the geographic township of Houghton. The lands contain two dwellings, one which was previously used as a garden suite and a detached garage. The lands are also forested and contain a provincially significant wetland at the rear. The lands are zoned and designated agricultural. The purpose of this application is to convert one of the dwellings from a garden suite to a permanent use. This application will allow for future housing options to assist with meeting demand and has assisted for... Has existed for several years with no conflict. This application represents good planning. Staff support this application and recommend that it be approved.
Counselor Columbus?
Couple things, Madam Mayor. This is a public hearing committee meeting as per the front page of the agenda. And then, the report calls it a council meeting. And then, further on, on page 75, the application reads "Public Hearings Committee." So, are we supposed to stand during this process because it's a new process that we've engaged in? Or do we remain seated?
You can remain seated, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. So I do have a question to the planner. And does this particular building meet our code? County material building code?
Through the mayor, yes, it does.
It does, okay. And we have a number, I believe dozens, of garden suites. So will we be expecting a lot more of these types of applications coming forward? Permitting a second dwelling on a property?
Through the mayor, this one is unique because it was built as a permanent dwelling many years ago. A second house was built on the property and the first one was allowed to remain as a garden suite. Generally, that's not how the process works. It's meant to be a temporary building that has to be removed. So I wouldn't anticipate many more of these applications.
Thank you.
Any further questions from counselors? Okay, is the applicant or agent in attendance? Do you wish to speak? Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak in general or against the application? Is there anything further from the Public Hearing Committee? Oh. If you could come forward and just say your name and address to the podium?
So next door. My only concern is you mentioned that other changes could be made to this garden suite? In the future? You had said that?
Fortunately, you don't get to ask the question, but we can probably find somebody that will ask the question for you if you want to express your concerns.
So, is it going to stay a garden suite? Or does this leave open in the future for it to become a full-blown second dwelling?
Right. Thanks, that's fair enough.
Through the mayor, the purpose of the application is to permit it to basically exist in its current form, but be on a permanent basis and not have to be torn down.
Any further questions from the Hearing Committee? Okay, if I could have a mover and seconder to close the meeting? Counselor Rabbits, seconded by Counselor Geisens. All those in favor? And that's carried. Does somebody wish to move the staff recommendation? Counselor Van Passen? Second, staff recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a beautiful little log cabin, and it's like the little brother of the new home. And it'd be a shame to get rid of it. And the use of the property has changed, and the new owners have been made aware of the former zoning. And I'd love to leave it there, so I would move the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Perfect. Seconded by Counselor Columbus. All those in favor? And that's carried. Oh. Perfect, thanks. Okay, next one is staff report DCS 19-88. That's in regards to an application that has been received to place a special zoning provision on the subject lands to allow a mobile food premise chip wagon as a permitted use. Bob and Bonnie Cookson have put forth the application affecting the lands described as 8 Cookson Street, Port Ryersie. I'd now like to open the public meeting on staff report DCS 19-88. And Mr. Collier, if you could please present your report, sir.
This is a zoning bylaw amendment application to allow a mobile food premise on the subject lands through a special provision on the property. The property is 0.64 hectares in size and is located at the corner of Cookson Street and Port Ryersie Road in the Hamlet of Port Ryersie. A single detached dwelling and two sheds are located on the property, and surrounding land uses are primarily residential in nature. The official plan allows the opportunity for small-scale commercial uses in Hamlet areas, so long as they are not a major water user. The proposed use will not draw up substantial amount of water, and the subject lands are located at a main intersection of Port Ryersie, which is considered a suitable location for a small-scale food premise. The proposed use requires minimal site alteration and can be removed easily if the use ceases to exist in the future. The proposed mobile food premise use falls under the definition of a chip wagon in the zoning bylaw, defined as a vehicle, trailer, or cart equipped as an eating establishment and able to be made mobile, where food is prepared and sold for immediate consumption by the public. One letter of opposition was received for this application from a neighboring property owner and is attached as an appendix to the staff report. Concerns were raised regarding the proposed use, changes to the current green space, parking, waste, and increased traffic. These concerns have been brought to the intention of the applicant to consider when proceeding with the project if the zoning amendment is approved. The applicant submitted a justification letter for this proposal, which is also attached as an appendix to the staff report. The applicant will work with the health unit to obtain their necessary approvals. The proposed mobile food premise would serve a need in the Hamlet of Port Ryersie. It is a small-scale commercial use, which does not require a substantial amount of water and is considered compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommend the application be approved.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the Hearing Committee? Counselor Columbus?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at page 15 of the agenda package, page three of the report. And under regard for public input, it states the last sentence there, or the second sentence from the last. "The development is not a building or structure as it is on wheels and movable." Yet, when we dealt with the Hastings Drive issue, that type of, like a Winnebago or camping, was considered a structure. So, can you clarify the difference here for me? Is it because of the area it's in? Because back then, I recall that an item like that was considered a structure. And here, it's not considered a structure.
Through the chair, site plan control does not apply in Hamlet residential zones, where this property is located. That section of the report is just stating that site plan control does not apply as it's not fallen under the definition of development in Section 41 of the Planning Act.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm actually going to jump in here on that because I don't think that really addresses that question. So site plan control doesn't apply to development, and development is defined as the construction or action or placing of one or more structures. But Counselor Columbus's question is, is... In the past, you, the planning department, we have seen has deemed trailers a structure. So, we're seeing kind of... And I know this isn't really probably, it's prior to your time, so maybe Shannon might be able to jump in there.
Through you, Mayor Chop, thank you. And I will try to answer the question raised by Counselor Columbus. With respect to the issues on Hastings Drive versus the structure, I believe it's more the consideration of use, whether what the trailer was considered as a use as opposed to a structure. I don't have the details offhand, however, and I can review back with some of the board orders and the decisions that went through with Hastings, as well as speak with our chief building official, Fritz Enzlin, to see what discussions were had on there. Unfortunately, I wasn't privy to a lot of the conversations that happened with Hastings Drive. It's my understanding it was more of a use issue, and the zoning amendment would allow the use of the trailer as a chip wagon, as opposed to the use as a trailer, so to speak, a RV on the Hastings Drive. But I can look into that for counsel.
So, when I read this last night, I thought perhaps somebody could set up a fish truck wagon or a chip wagon on Hastings, with the way it was worded.
Maybe they should. Counselor Van Passen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page 13, the site features and land uses sort of take exception to the descriptions of my parts of Ward 4 because it lists an abandoned lumber mill located on the east side of Port Ryersie Road. That's not an abandoned lumber mill. It's changed hands and it's still an ongoing business. It's just not in the lumber business anymore. So, I wouldn't want to think that we had abandoned old buildings laying around Ward 4. They might have them in other wards, but not in ours, so...
I have a couple of questions myself about the report. So first is under the financial services component, that this will have a positive impact on assessment growth and tax revenues. I'm just curious how that's... Are we... Is the property tax assessment going to be increasing because of the chip wagon?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The financial services comments do come from our financial services department, so I can't answer specifically what, where, direction they were coming from. But when tax assessment and the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation looks at a property, they look at the use. So if there's an operating commercial use on the property, there is the potential that taxes could be increased based on that commercial component now operating on a residential property.
So, moving forward, I think that if we're going to look at doing things like this on a piece of property, instead of having a report with may have a positive impact, I think counsel needs to understand, will it or won't it? And what is that positive impact? So that we can understand how to judge that. The next comment I just wanted to make was actually back to the same paragraph that Counselor Columbus pointed out. And that was sort of the suggestion that site plan control could have addressed these issues, but it doesn't meet the definition of development. I kind of find that it's sort of irrelevant because it doesn't apply to this. So I'm not really sure why kind of we're even talking about site plan control in this case. That said, it says that the concerns have been brought to the applicant's attention. And I actually think that some of the concerns that I read in the letter are quite fair. And if I was a neighbor around there, and I'll get to the point of whether or not everybody was provided notice, I myself might have some concerns with some of that. So, the thing is, just like we are able to put a holding provision on, you know, granting a zoning amendment in the case of not having water, or so on and so forth, although site plan control is not the tool to be able to address these concerns, there certainly could be a negotiation with this Public Hearing Committee and counsel to be able to say, okay, we will grant this, but we want to see a parking lot, but we want to see, you know, some sort of trees or buffer being provided between them and the neighbor. We want to see how all of these things are being addressed before just approving a chip wagon in the middle of a residential area. And so to me, to just say, well, site plan control could have done it, but we can't use that tool. There are actual tools that we could do, and that tool is, they're asking for a concession, and it's a negotiation, and we're willing to give it to them, provided these other concerns are addressed. So I still have concerns moving forward. Maybe we'll hear from the applicant of how that's all going to be addressed. And then the final question that I have is, in terms of notification to all of the surrounding neighbors, were they all served notice? Did somebody from the planning department go and speak? Because it is quite a bit of a change, I think, to put a chip wagon in the middle of a residential area. So were they all consulted?
Through the mayor, the standard notice radius would be about 400 feet from the property lines, so all neighbors within that radius should have received direct mail notices. As well, I did a site inspection and saw that both yellow signs were posted on each road, with this being a quarter lot, with my contact information both on the notices and on the yellow signs. If anyone had any questions, they could always contact me. But again, only the one letter was received.
I think, just my parents' farm, there was something that had taken place right next door. And although I guess it came in the mail at one point, we weren't sort of even made aware of it. So I just think in a unique situation like this, where it is, again, a fundamental change, I think we really need to ensure that everybody is reached out to, certainly in a particular, maybe even more than 400 feet in the future in that case. But anyway. I guess, in that case, I will now open the public meeting upon staff report DCS 19-88 and ask if the applicant or agent is in attendance. Sorry, Counselor Van Passen, that's another question.
One more question for staff. I noticed that that lot originally was surveyed as a planned subdivision, and it was nine separate lots. Is it merged in title into one lot now? Or are those lots still lots?
Through the mayor, it's Counselor Van Passen. That is now one property. It may have been multiple lots on an original planned subdivision, but it is now one landholding.
A little more background on that. There used to be a... There used to be a school there, up until the late sixties, and then the school was torn down, and all of those houses were, the whole triangle piece there was laid out as a plan of subdivision, and that's where the houses ended up. So, it hasn't been there for that long.
The applicant or agent, if you wish to come forward. Did you wish to speak?
Okay, I just wanted to say that we are, we're going to put a driveway in, and then we are going to put a parking lot in there. My husband owns Cookson Disposal, so there will be a bin there, there will be garbage cans, there will be no garbage. And there's not a lot of houses down that way. Like, I've received probably about, probably seventy emails of people that really want it because there's nothing there. And there's, I just wanted to put that in there, that I've ran a restaurant for fifteen years, and, okay.
Any questions from Counselor, Counselor Warren?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Ms. Cookson, do you have plans for a seasonal operation, and if so, what, what would that look like?
It would be seasonal. Like, you just asked me, like, how long? Probably May to early November, if I could, providing the weather, like.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in general or in opposition to the application? In that case, if I could have a mover and seconder to close the public meeting, Counselor Huffman, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor? And any further questions to staff? Okay, somebody wish to move the staff recommendation? Counselor Columbus?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and seconder, Counselor Guyson, any further discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried. We'll be down for chips. Okay, next report is staff report DCS nineteen dash ninety-one, and this is in regards to an application that has been received to construct an accessory building on the subject lands containing a habitable room and requiring relief of 1.6 meters from the maximum permitted height of five meters to allow 6.6 meters and relief of 11 square meters from the maximum permitted usable floor area of 55 square meters to allow 66 square meters. John and Marlene Smith and the agent Prominent Homes have put forth the application affecting the lands described as sixteen, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this right, Waret Avenue in Simcoe. I'll now open the public meeting upon staff report DCS nineteen dash ninety-one, and Mr. Collier, if you could please present your report.
The applicants are proposing to construct an accessory building on the property and have applied for a zoning bylaw amendment to allow a height of 6.6 meters, a usable floor area of 66 square meters, and to allow a habitable room within the structure. The subject lands are located at sixteen Waret Ave. in the urban area of Simcoe. The property is 1,050 square meters in size and contains a single detached dwelling. Surrounding land uses are urban residential in nature, consisting of single detached dwellings on all sides. The accessory building is proposed to be constructed at the rear of the property. The applicants have previously obtained building permits for a structure without a habitable room and with a smaller height and area, which complied with the zoning bylaw provisions. Since that time, the plans have changed, and the subject application has come forward requesting relief for zoning deficiencies through the revised proposal. The requested relief for height is considered appropriate, given the request for relief is due to the building design and the proposed roof pitch, and not to add a second level or loft area. The building is proposed to be set back six and a half feet from property lines, which is two and a half feet more than the minimum requirement, and assists with separating the taller structure from neighboring properties. The requested relief for usable floor area is considered appropriate in this instance as usable floor area from the original proposal is to enclose what was previously planned to be a covered patio on the side proposed against the house. This change results in the usable floor area exceeding the maximum allowed by 11 square meters or 125 square feet. The proposed structure would occupy 8.2% of the lot, which is less than the permitted 10% maximum lot coverage for accessory structures. The applicants are proposing a habitable room within the structure. It's staff's understanding through dealing with the agent that the habitable room is for a proposed entertainment space separate from the main home and is not intended as a standalone dwelling unit. The submitted building plans are attached as an appendix to the staff report. Many letters of opposition to this application were received. Generally, the letters raise concerns with the size of the building, the proposed habitable space, and if it will become an extra dwelling, negative impacts on neighboring property values, and that the proposed structure is out of character with the area. Letters received on or before September third are attached as an appendix to the staff report, and letters received September fourth or later have been provided separately to council. Having considered the public input received and with regard to the planning policies and impressions from a site inspection of the property, staff recommend the application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Any questions from, oh, sorry, Counselor Columbus and then Counselor Rabbit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Collier, your executive summary, and you had mentioned it, it's a request to allow a habitable room, okay? And then, when you go to page forty-one of the agenda package, page five of twelve of the report, right at the very top, section 2.2, it says, accessory building or structure to mean a detached building or structure used for the accessory use, such as, without limitation, a detached garage or storage or shelter of materials, equipment, and other items, but shall not contain a dwelling unit or a habitable room. It says right there, it shall not contain it, but yet, you're recommending it. So, can you clarify your position as to why you're recommending it if section twenty-two says, 2.2 says, we're not supposed to be looking at it?
Through the mayor, Counselor Columbus, with this application, they are requesting an amendment to that definition, and through view of the application, it is considered appropriate in this instance to recommend approval.
Counselor Rabbit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Stephen. My question is about the foundations that are currently on the site. Is it to my understanding that the foundations that have been put in place were for the original plan that did not seek relief of 1.6 meters or the 11 square meter, square footage of the usable floor area? It was a foundation that's been approved and put in place for a different application or for the one that's before us today. I'm a little curious as to how some infrastructure could be put in place before council has approved of the relief or of the actual application. Because we know there's visible infrastructure in the ground, and I don't know if that infrastructure is for an application that would comply with the existing bylaw, or if that infrastructure, that foundation, is for what's before us today.
Through the chair, Counselor Rabbit, some site features have been put in place already, and I was with building permits for a structure that was originally smaller and complied with the zoning bylaw provisions, so they did achieve building permits for a smaller structure and one that didn't show a habitable room. There is some, you know, plumbing to buildings that don't have a habitable room, but may have a small washroom. Small washroom is excluded from habitable room definition, but any works that are currently on site were done with building permits through a prior proposal.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through you to Mr. Collier, on our agenda package, page forty-two, page six of the report, under strategic plan linkage, with the foster vibrant and creative communities, I'm just curious with that definition, sorry, how you came to that with the outcry of almost 20 letters from the neighbors that are opposed to this?
Through the chair, Counselor Taylor, that's a great question. With that section of the report, the proposal is for new development and new building in Norfolk County, and that generally contributes to the vision for fostering vibrant and creative communities to allow for, you know, new development, regeneration on properties within the built-up areas.
Okay, thank you. And then, the habitable portion, habitable portion of the room is not intended for residency, but what would be, what do we have in place to stop, just in a general sense here, if someone else, like, anyone creates a habitable room that isn't intended for residency, what do we have in place to stop someone from just moving someone in, just hypothetical?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Taylor. I believe it would come down to the use and how the building permits are issued. You'd be looking, if there was going to a residency, there would be a change of use that would be required, and there are specific, residences are not permitted within a detached structure at the moment. The only opportunity for secondary units on a property is within the existing structure, so they would not be in compliance with the zoning bylaw, and enforcement would have to incur from there.
For the clarification.
If I could just jump back on Counselor Taylor's point, actually, about how this ties in with council's strategic priorities, could you just elaborate that a little bit more for me? I'm just, I don't, I think maybe we're kind of missing what council was getting at with creative vibrant communities. How is that fostering a creative community in the back, in planning department's view?
To the mayor, with that section of the strategic plan, we really focused on the vibrant communities part, so any new development contributes to an increased tax base and improves, you know, the, the looks and ages of buildings within the urban area.
It might foster a vibrant backyard, but maybe miss the community portion of it. I guess the other comment that I want to make on this as well is, so the application that we just saw come forward for a French fry truck had a financial services component of an increased impact assessment, and yet, this one doesn't have any comments from financial services? To me, this would more likely drive an increased assessment value than the French fry truck, no? Or did financial services just not get to review it, or what happened there?
To the mayor, we didn't receive comments from financial services after circulating them on this application. You're right, there would probably still be a positive impact to impact values through the proposed construction.
Counselor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions about this. On page forty-one, it speaks about the need to increase the size because they want to enclose a covered patio. So, if they didn't enclose the covered patio, then they wouldn't need to ask for relief for the extra 11 meters. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. So, the requested relief is for usable floor area, which is enclosed space, so enclosed by at least three walls, whereas if it was left as an uncovered patio with no walls, not enclosed, it would only contribute to lot coverage and not usable floor area.
So, if they don't put up any screens, they wouldn't need the relief? And then, I looked at the plans at the back, I see they have a 13/12 pitch on the roof to match the design of the house, so if they drop the pitch of the roof to an 8/12 and get it back to the five meters, they wouldn't need that exemption. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, if they were able to redesign the building to meet the five meters provision in the zoning bylaw, they would not need to request relief for that section.
And then, on page forty-one, it explains about a habitable room, but they are allowed to have a bathroom, a change room, a bathhouse, a sauna, a laundry room, a furnace room, a hallway closet, storage room. All that's allowed, so as long as they don't drag the kitchen stove out there and throw it out back, they can pretty well do anything in there anyway, can't they? So, where's the, where's the line that changes it to a habitable room?
Through the chair, to Counselor Van Passen. Again, as Shannon alluded to earlier in an earlier answer, it really depends on the use of the, of the unit. So, it depends on, you know, what they show on the plans that are submitted. In this case, they showed an area labeled as a kitchen and clearly showing a kitchen space, which is considered habitable room by the definition. But as far as, you know, changes after the fact, it really is on a zoning bylaw enforcement basis, should complaints be made. It's hard to kind of control the use of rooms after building permits have been issued until complaints have been, you know, come in.
Could you, I don't see where, I see a fridge, I see a bathroom, I see a sink, I don't see the kitchen stove anywhere in these plans that are presented, so did the applicants explain that they were going to put all that there?
Through the mayor, I may defer to the agent who is in attendance and is the builder.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Columbus.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Mr. Collier, I see a letter here from Mr. Mike Hack, page sixty-three of the package, and it talks about, "I am against this proposed zoning amendment due to the covenants put in place when I moved into this subdivision." Is there covenants in that subdivision that would forbid such a structure? I see people in the audience nodding their head yes, so do we know what those covenants are?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Columbus, the covenants wouldn't be a planning-related issue. It's not a zoning component, so we would not be aware of any subsequent agreements that may have been registered between property owners and the developer at the time.
It'd be good to know. Thank you.
So, I was going to actually wait until after we heard everybody, but I might jump in here now with it. What kind of perplexes me with this, so are you prepared to approve then if every single neighbor in this subdivision came forward and wanted to do the same thing? Are you prepared, in your professional opinion, then, to recommend that every single one of these lots in this subdivision be granted the same, the same height and the, and the same increase in usable floor space and so on and so forth?
To the mayor, again, each planning application is evaluated on its own merits and in its own location. Certainly, if similar structures were to come forward, we would consider an approval recommendation. And again, I'd like to remind council, we are looking at a project, kind of aside from this, looking at updating our accessory residential dwelling unit policies to allow such units in accessory structures. And I think it's good to hear some of the feedback we've heard from the community on this application and consider when we move ahead on that project, which would potentially allow these types of units in more places and more forms as of right.
I'm glad you said that, actually, because this isn't the same thing. This isn't an additional dwelling unit, right? So, this isn't what we're actually evaluating in the public consultation period right now. That's how do we increase our housing stock in Norfolk County to meet, you know, our needs for accessible or affordable housing? But this is just a, an entertainment suite, so I don't know that there should be judged on the same level. The other challenge I have is that, okay, if each application comes forward on an individual basis, I also think that this is the problem of what we've been doing wrong in the past. We're treating each one on an individual basis, as opposed to if it's planning's recommendation that this lot should have this, perhaps you need, it should be the zoning bylaw then that is updated to be able to allow for such structures and have full public consultation as to whether or not that's what we want in our community or whether we don't. But it's the handling on an individual basis that seems like a Band-Aid solution on one property, when theoretically, every one of those property owners in that subdivision then should be able to come forward and do exactly the same thing and have the same approval. That's just my opinion on that. Any further questions? And then, we'll ask the applicant or agent if they wish to come forward. The applicant or agent in attendance. Did you wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Sam Bunting with Prominent Homes, and I was hired by John and Marlene Smith to, I guess, take over their project. I've coming in after the fact, after the foundation that you mentioned was put in, after a building permit was approved for that foundation. And I'm working with the customers to, I guess, give them what they want, but also be very transparent in this meeting and honest. You, you alluded to the fact that there was a screened-in porch that takes us over the 55 square meters. If this screened-in porch wasn't, I guess, if we weren't being transparent, we would be under the 55 square meters, and this would essentially pass without a question. We are going, we are asking for relief for the height of the building. The, the reason we are asking for that is for the integrity or the attractive design that we've, we've planned for this building. This, this building is, is very tasteful. It, it's going to be a building that's going to cost well over $300,000. It will add tax revenue. It will add value to the neighborhood. It will add value to the neighborhood. So the, the intent of the building, working with the owners, will be a three-season sunroom. To answer your question, there, there isn't a plan for a stove within the kitchen because they don't intend to use it as a habitable space. They plan on using it for entertainment purposes only. And again, three seasons being the, the main use of the building, the owners don't live in the home during the wintertime and the, the building will have a screened-in area as well. So there is no intended use for the wintertime purposes.
Questions from councilors. Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to our agent. My question to you is about the cathedral-style ceiling. Now, is that something that your client may be willing to forego? Is that the reason why you're seeking a relief specifically with the ceiling height inside? Or is it with that covering, sorry, for, for the outside portion to tie everything together?
It, it wasn't necessarily the height of the ceiling that they were, they were hoping for. Even the, the main reason we asked for relief of the building was because of the front of the building, we, the homeowners requested a 912 roof pitch with the, the front of the building. If you look at it, it has a very nice pitch to the roof with some nice timber features. So in order to have that 912 roof pitch on the front, the very attractive front roof pitch, that was the reason why the height of the building went up with a smaller roof pitch. The, the clients didn't feel the building looked as attractive.
So further to the point I'm trying to make is it is for aesthetics.
Yes, it is, yes.
And, you know, $300,000 is the price of a single-family home in Norfolk County anyway. And I, I think that this is a bit of overdevelopment, particularly for this building. It dwarfs every other structure in the backyards in the neighborhood. And I wanted, you know, sort of your, your feedback on just the grandeur of the structure. We're talking about cathedral-style ceilings or roofs, sorry. We're talking about the price of a single-family home and the nature of the neighborhood, this isn't infiting with the nature of the neighborhood, in my opinion, looking at all of the different buildings that are surrounding this domicile. And I wanted your perspective as the agent defending the scale of the building project.
Absolutely. Just to give you my, my professional opinion on the scale, when you look at the height of this building, I believe it was 20 feet, 21 feet tall. When you look at the scale of homes, so from the front of the home, most homes' average height will be 22 to 26 feet tall when they're a single-family dwelling. So from the front street, you won't be able to see this, this building behind the homes because it will be the same height or lesser height than the average bungalow within the neighborhood. If, if that, and, and to be honest, when you look at the, the scale of the footprint of the building, again, this building is designed to be within the, the bylaws of 55 square meters. It's only the, the outside screened-in covered area that took us over. And i- if, if the, the homeowner were to say, okay, we're not going to screen in that, that outside porch area, well then that, that part isn't considered as a part of the habitable space. So then we're, we're meeting the 55 square meters. So when you, when you look at that side of, when you look at this, the footprint, we're meeting the footprint, really it's just that screened-in porch that's taking us over and we're being transparent here to say, yes, we're screening in that porch, but, you know what I mean, we're, we're just being transparent there. When you look at the height of the building, I, the height of the building won't be above the other homes in the neighborhood. So it's not like you're driving down the street, hey, look at that tall building in the backyard. You, you won't have that appearance to the neighborhood.
So just to further to Councilor Rabbit's point, I mean, hardly anyone still, I don't think speaks in square meters here, but like 700 square feet, you know? So when we're looking at changing rules in Norfolk County to allow tiny homes and this kind of thing, like 700 square feet even for a tiny home is big. I mean, my, I had a condo in London when I was going to law school and I think it was 700 square feet and that was an entire place. So, I mean, this really is a home that's being put up in the backyard.
It's, well, again, the, the bylaw states 55 square meters. So we're working within the bylaw for the, the habitable space. It's only this screened-in porch that's taking us over that habitable space. So if, if we just told our clients to not put in a screened-in porch, it would essentially fall within the bylaw.
So can you comment, so we may have this bylaw, but can you comment then as a builder on the covenant that they're referring to that was in the original development agreement?
I, I don't know. This subdivision was built, I would assume, 15 years ago. I'm not sure of the covenants. And I mean, at the time when, coming from a builder, we, we follow covenants with a, a developer and we're governed by the developer's covenants and we sell to a customer, I don't know how those covenants are enforced beyond that initial sale. Because I, I don't feel like there, those covenants are taken into effect for the bylaws because then every single subdivision would be, I guess the bylaws would be completely different for every single subdivision based on the covenant. So do you understand what I mean?
Well, I do. I mean, as, I'm, I'm asking actually for reasons beyond just this application, but as we're seeing things come forward in the last couple of weeks in terms of, so developer comes forward and puts together, you know, a site plan for their subdivision and so on, and then we're finding out that everything from, you know, mailboxes to you name it, different items are not being addressed. And so now the question that we're starting to ask staff is like, how do we ensure that developers actually go and finish the job? But at the same token with this, if a developer now has come to Norfolk County and sold homes in Norfolk County on the basis of marketing to people saying, this is never going to happen in your backyard, then I don't know. In my view, Norfolk County should probably be respecting that zoning bylaw should reflect what that, whatever that deal was that was struck at the time. And if those places were presented, if that site plan was presented to Norfolk County and that developer said, this is, this is the agreement that we're going to sell these homes on this basis, then to me, 15 years, it's not like that's 150 years ago. It's not that long ago.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I, I would think Norfolk County would have to look at the agreements with the developer right up front and then request any covenants and then put the covenants directly within the bylaw of the subdivision.
So I think one thing would be interesting from Norfolk County to see what agreement, what covenants were on there, as Councilor Columbus pointed out earlier at the time, because maybe there isn't even, there was a covenant not even for a 55-square-meter building.
Yeah, I, I've never seen a covenant like that from a, a developer's standpoint for an exterior building. A lot of times they're, they're talking about above-ground pools and height of fences and stuff like that. So I can't comment to that.
I saw a bunch of hands. So Councilor Columbus and then Councilor Huffman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bunting, I too was going to question the covenant, but I think you've covered that. But this is an entertainment room, basically. And where would everybody be parking? Like if you're inviting guests over, I would assume that there's going to be a lot of vehicles in the area. Where would the parking be available?
I, I know the, the driveway is quite large that the, the client has there. I, I would assume it could fit at least four cars, maybe possibly six. I know there's a double-car driveway or double-car garage, so potentially six within the, the driveway and the garage. There, there is a lot of adequate parking on the street as well with a very wide street. The customer I'm, I'm working with here, they're, I, I wouldn't call them party animals. I, I would say they're, they're very tasteful people, running a, a very well-known business, Smith's Trucking in Walsh. I, I, they're very reputable people within the community. Yeah, they're just looking for a, a space to entertain and use with, I guess, I would say with their family.
Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Mayor Chop. Through you too, Mr. Bunting. So I, I appreciate the fact that you mentioned about the screened-in porch, that in terms of transparency, that if that wasn't, you know, brought forward, you'd be within the, the measurements needed. I guess my question is, the height, the height of the building seems to be overlooked here. It, it's quite high and it poses, I think, the biggest issue for most of the neighbors. And is that, so covenants, no covenants, to me it doesn't matter. It's too high, is it not?
I just want to pull out the application. I believe the, the bylaw is, sorry about this. The bylaw's five meters for a building height, which is 16 foot, five inches. When you look at that height, when you, for example, a shed, when you have an eight-foot wall height plus a standard roof, a roof, you're, you're looking at at least 14 feet, 13 to 14 feet for a standard shed. When you look at this building, we're asking for relief of approximately another five feet. So the, yes, you are correct. We are asking for, for more relief of five feet. When you look at the difference between a typical shed and then adding another five feet, I don't think it's going to make a drastic impact. Again, it won't be taller than the, the houses in front of it, which is why councils recommend, or excuse me, staff has recommended.
Okay, I want to, of course it's not going to be than the houses. I mean, that's why we have these bylaws in place.
Sure, absolutely.
So I, I mean, when you're looking at relief of five feet for an exterior building, to me, that is a lot of relief. We're not looking at, you know, just to, to match the pitch of a roof, you know, an additional six inches or something like that. This is five feet. This proposed accessory structure is, is almost 22 feet high. That's quite large. So I can say as an, as a resident in the community, not this particular neighborhood, I could see where that would be an issue that you, it's blocking views, it's blocking sunlight, you know, that type of thing. So I think it's very important that we, we, we focus on the height as well and that that is, that's a, a big issue and it's mentioned quite a bit in a lot of the letters of opposition.
Councilor Shelley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilor Huffman covered many of the things I was going to ask. I, I just was wanting to make it clear that, Sammy, I'd mentioned, I think, three or four times that if the square footage was reduced without the screened-in porch, that there would be no problem. But I think as Councilor Huffman has mentioned, this is also a pretty big request for relief on the height issue, for, in my point of view. Thank you.
Questions? Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question would be like, many of these height restrictive bylaws aren't so much to do with the usage, but the enjoyment of the neighbors, that they don't have a huge structure that's quite literally in their backyard, just a couple meters away. So what consideration was the applicant giving towards the neighbors that would see it from behind as opposed to just the street view? I know they gave the consideration for the street view, making sure it wouldn't be seen. But for the, those houses on Carolinian Court and the direct neighbors, what consideration was given there?
Unfortunately, we, we didn't include a rear elevation. But the, the rear of the building would, would look, I don't want to say similar to the front, except it wouldn't have that double roof peak. So it would be more of a blank slate for, of a, of a roof with the wall with no windows at the back. So there, there is no, I guess, there is no windows overlooking the neighbors' properties. It would more, more so just be the building itself that would face the rear. I, I guess I, I can't mention anything other than that. I, I guess to answer your question about the concerns of the height of the building, I, what, Stephen, if you don't mind me asking you, what is the bylaw of the height of, of a building within Norfolk County for a, for a property like this? Do you know the, what the height of a building is? Is it, is it 11 meters?
Well, maybe you can answer the question afterward. I just, we got to keep meeting.
Yeah, I understand.
So I can't get into questions back and forth.
Okay. I, I just wanted to give staff some perspective because I believed it was 11 meters, which is something like 35 feet for a, a standard home that could be built on this property. So when you look at the difference between a home that could be built 35 feet tall compared to a, a building in the backyard that's 22 feet, there is a considerable difference. This, this building isn't as grand as, as, as what you're thinking.
But it is 700 square meters in floor space and the whole backyard is only 1,050. So it is pretty substantial.
I, I wouldn't, no, because the, the backyard is much larger than 1,050 square feet.
Well, planning staff here, the subject lands are 1,050 square meters.
Oh, square meters, so, so.
Oh, sorry, my bad. My apologies.
Yeah, keep in mind this building's 66. So, so really the, this building is making up essentially 6% of the backyard. It's.
Councilor Van Passen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to touch on that, that it's a beautiful neighborhood out there. It's not going to be confused with a neighborhood with tiny homes in it. I think there's quite a few homes in there that butt up against that maximum allowable height of 11 meters. There's one next door that's not too, much shorter than that. And, and, you know, a question to the, the agent here, would the applicants be willing to like, don't screen in the covered porch? That eliminates the need for that request. Don't drag the kitchen stove out there. That eliminates the need for that request. So now we're just down to the height. And knowing Prominent Homes has built a lot of very beautiful home subdivisions around the county for many, many years, I'll go back to that, that size and scale when you're, all they're really asking for is to sort of match that pitch so that the, the look of the accessory building and the look of the house is going to match the neighborhood. It's going to match the size and scale of everything else. By flattening out that, that, what, I don't know how to phrase it, what's the better sort of architectural look? Is it put a flat-roofed building in it that meets the, the criteria inside of a beautiful neighborhood? Isn't that more out of place than trying to bump it up by that extra couple of feet to get that pitch to sort of match the look around there?
That, that would be a very good question. My professional opinion, having a higher roof pitch is always more attractive-looking building. And to answer your question, yes, we could build the wall 16 feet tall and then put a flat roof on it and it would be a much more of an eyesore. So yes, that, yeah, yeah. So I mean, that is a very valid point. But yes, I would consider a higher roof pitch more elegant.
Okay, if it's okay, we're going to move on if we can, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak in general or in opposition to the application? Great. So again, if there's a number of you, if you could kind of be queued up and ready to go and state your name and address and keep it short and sweet.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon to the council as well. My name is Patrick McAlhoun and my wife Fran is with me and we live at 3 Carolinian Court, directly behind the proposed amended property of 16 Waret. I'd like to address some points that the planner, Stephen Collier, has made in his report and I will try to reference as well, as I've heard some of you, the page and section from that report. The first issue found is on page two of the report titled, "Regard to Public Input." Of the 18 emails received from within the 400-foot radius, all were opposed to the zoning amendment. The general comments were proposed size and scale, proposed habitable space, potential negative effect on the property values, and allowing a structure of this scale setting a precedent. The second issue found on page four of the report, Norfolk County Official- The second issue found on page four of the report, "Norfolk County Official Plan." I quote, "Assessory buildings are common on properties in the urban residential designation. The proposed design of the structure is similar to that of existing structures in the area." We questioned the planner's statement. It would not be similar to existing structures. Existing structures in our area, and I can only refer to two, uh, immediate beside and in the near vicinity, are in the fourteen-feet high and fifteen-feet height, not the twenty-one feet, six and a half inches as proposed. Existing structures are for storage or a poolhouse, and do not have a washroom and kitchen area. This building is not in the true spirit of a cabana, which we hear is the request, or accessory building." The third issue found on page five of the report proposes zone, its proposed zoning. We have some, a couple pictures we'd like to show, but I would like the picture one to be, uh, put up as I speak to this issue. And while that's being done, the existing bylaw allows for a height of sixteen feet, four inches. The proposed is twenty-one feet, six inches in height. That's a thirty-two percent increase. It's not just a little variance, that's a major increase. Okay, and I'm waiting for the picture to reinforce this statement. Okay, this is the backyard, the south of the property. The house in the four, in the background, is the house sixteen Warette. This is the tree on our property, and that happens to be me, on that ladder, and that tree, that blue spruce, is twenty-two feet high. So, the building in our backyard is going to, that building going up will be our, our view in the near future if this goes through. The square footage is five hundred and ninety-two square feet presently. They wish to make it seven hundred and ten point four square feet. That's a twenty percent increase. The increased height and roof pitch creates a much larger roof and would be obstruction, not negatively impacting neigh, excuse me, negatively impacting neighboring properties, and especially ours on the south side. The planning report states, "Property is well screened on two sides." Okay, this is the south side of the Warette property. So, the other two sides are the north, the right and left of that are well screened. We're not sure why the back, the south side, is not mentioned. It's not screened at all. If we could have the next picture, and there's no special order, there's number two and three. Once again, this is the house, Smith's house, that is the opening. So, as we look through, at where the structure is going, so, it is quite visible from our home and garden. We will be forced to, uh, invest in mature landscaping to try, to try to screen that structure. This impacts on enjoyment of our backyard. Not visible from the road was the statement? Well, that may be on the north side, but this is the south side. From Carolinian, you can see that very clearly. We can see it very clearly from our backyard. It says it's a habitable dwelling, and I quote, it, pardon? Thank you. "It is understood that the intent of proposed building is to allow a habitable room and separate entertainment space from the main dwelling, not a separate, uh, unit. There is no guarantee from future owners, uh, would not use this as a dwelling for Airbnb, and I know this is not the Smith's intent. The proposed zoning amendment could become a precedent setting." This, and says, "The establishment of newly development in Norfolk County assists with the improving of viability of the community. We challenge this statement. How does the proposed structure contribute to vitality? Neighbors are strongly opposed to this, oppose, a proposed amendment, as noted in the eighteen emails and phone calls. It would decrease the value of accessibility in our neighboring properties and would decrease the employment of our backyard. People purchased homes in this area because of guidelines in place creating an attractive neighborhood. Proposed to structure does not comply with these existing bylaws. Bylaws exist to create uniformity and to establish criteria to protect the public or the people who invest and make their homes in a desired neighborhood. We believe that the existing bylaws are generous and that the proposed structure should conform to them. The proposed higher structure and larger roof is for..."
I'm going to have to cut you off, sir, thank you.
Well, there's one thank you to the council, if I could, please have that. I think the previous speaker had just a little bit.
The applicant, under the new rules, is able, at my discretion, to continue to speak, which is why I allowed him to do it, but we have a whole lot of people here, so.
I would have been done by now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess.
My name's Robert Ian Shaw, I live at seventy-eight Lindale Road, here in Simcoe. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I thank you for your ongoing commitment to make this county a great place to live. Let me first say that I do not adhere to the NIMBY philosophy, not in my backyard, nor am I opposed to change as a matter of principle. However, I am opposed to this application. Perhaps somewhat naively, I assume that the bylaws of this county have been carefully and thoughtfully prepared to order our community in the best way possible. If that assumption is correct, then I also assume that exceptions to these governing standards must be based on substantive and overwhelming grounds. I must confess, I found no such grounds in the report prepared by Mr. Collier. I found some vague and nebulous references to vision for Ontario land use planning systems, references that appear to be about living space density. Well, the purported purpose of this proposed structure is entertainment. So, I couldn't connect the dots, and was left wondering, why are we even talking about this provincial plan when it's about our local bylaws? Then I read the astounding conclusion that somehow, this proposed entertainment space will, and I quote, "Contribute to the vitality of the Simcoe settlement area." And I scratched my head and shrugged my shoulders, and again, could not connect the dots. The report concludes by affirming, "This will be entertaining space, not dwelling space." And once more, I was left pondering, who knows? Once this mass of structure is in place, with all utilities fully functioning, can you really tell me it won't become a permanent dwelling place? Oh, maybe our current owners won't, but suppose they sell a couple of years down the road, and the new owners see a great commercial opportunity, three hundred thousand dollars worth of opportunity? Now, we, the neighbors, are tasked with being big brother and making a complaint, and all this potential for more negative neighborhood vibes arise. My friends, that is not the kind of vitality I want in Simcoe. It's not the kind of vitality the overwhelming majority of the neighbors want. Not one neighbor has submitted a report giving support, but as was noted, almost twenty have opposed this. I'm also hopeful, this is not the kind of vitality you imagined for our county. To get more specific, Pat's already noted the thirty-two percent increase in height and twenty percent increase in floor space. That's not what our bylaws intended for additional backyard usage. This is a gigantic party house. Who wants that next door or on the same street? I'm sure that's not the intent, but it is the result, if approval is granted. So, why open the door? As I noted earlier, not one compelling reason is presented. That, my friends, is the burden of this exercise. Come up with strong, compelling reasons for an exemption. Otherwise, why bother having bylaws in the first place, if they can be whimsically set aside? My last item is about precedent. When my wife and I submitted our objections, I raised the matter of this large precedent-setting request. Mr. Collier responded, "That would not be the case." I beg to differ. Yep. Experience also begs to differ. This will become the de facto new standard for neighborhoods like ours. Approve this, and then at a later date, try to deny a similar or even slightly larger deviation. You will be so open to an appeal and accusations of inconsistency. That's the way society works. We don't need this change in our neighborhood, and from my vantage point, you don't need the potential negative fallout that will result from adopting this recommendation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, um, I'm Janet Kozikavichis, I live on Carolinian Court, and, uh, I am
also opposed to this. I sent a letter, not only as a member of the community there, but, um, as a realtor in the area for thirty-two years, thirty-three years. We, uh, we purchased our home in that area, thinking that it was a single-family residential area, and, and it complies with the zoning bylaw, and I too wonder why we have zoning bylaws if we're not going to, uh, comply with them. Uh, this application is actually allowing someone to put a building in their backyard that is as big as many of the single-family residential dwellings in Norfolk County, in Simcoe, um, Delhaye and surrounding area. And, um, if I build a single-family residential dwelling in this community, I have to respect side yard and rear yard setbacks. I believe in our neighborhood, it's in excess of twenty feet, this building will be within six feet. Um, at the current time, it's not suggested that it's a dwelling unit, however, what separates it from, from a dwelling unit? Is it merely a kitchen stove? Um, I brought actually, uh, copies of a couple of the properties that I've just sold in Norfolk County. I had an offer on one today at nine Homewood. The home is sixty, six hundred and eighty-eight square feet. I just had one last week that sold in Delhaye for six hundred and eighteen square feet. They're very capable of, uh, supporting a single family. And this is supposed to be, uh, an accessory building to a residence. We're not to have residences in our backyard. And, um, I'm also concerned about storm runoff. A couple of weeks ago, we got four inches of rain in a matter of a couple of hours, and I had a couple of inches of water come into my new home, just as a result of the ground not being able to take it up fast enough, and that's a fairly substantial roof. And, um, I don't think I have anything else to add, other than I do not believe that it's a benefit to our community or our town to, um, detract from the beautiful homes in the area to add this type of a, a unit in the backyard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, anyone else?
I'm Scott Jameson, I live at five Carolinian Court, which is the other house directly behind the structure, proposed structure. Uh, I'll be neither as eloquent or as verbose as my other neighbors. Um, I just wanted to, we've talked a lot about height, and that is the big issue, a couple of councils brought it up, that's the major issue. But you also have to remember, the width of this structure, it, or length, it will be thirty-nine feet long, so if you take thirty-nine feet by twenty-two feet, you've basically got what is known in the advertising business as a spectacular billboard. So, that's what I'll be looking at the back of, and my neighbor Pat, and the other two abutting neighbors. Um, so, it looks like John and Marlene are going to build a beautiful structure, either way they do it. Um, I have no doubt Prominent Homes will do a fantastic job, I've seen some other of their work. I would just respectfully ask that they stay within the height parameters, so that the rest of us can enjoy our skyline, uh, our sunlight, um, and, and what we purchased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris Harvey, fourteen Warette, I have, uh, the property next door, that is the, one of the few two-stories on the street. Um, just for perspective, because we've talked about size and so on and so forth, uh, I have a two-story house next door, that's twenty-five hundred square feet. My property across, or, sorry, my house across the back is forty feet. We have six people that live there, there's more than enough room, and this new structure is going to be thirty-nine feet wide. My house is, as I said, a two-story. It is approximately, uh, to the eve trough, it is eighteen feet, add about another nine feet for the ten, twelve pitch roof, and we're well under the thirty-six feet we've talked about for, talking about maximum sizes, and our house is either the tallest or the second tallest on the street. The other concept is the twelve-twelve, and I heard thirteen-twelve pitch today, which was new to me. Uh, the existing Smith family residence is approximately an eight-twelve pitch. So, when Prominent Homes wants to talk about, uh, attractive and so on and so forth, um, with a higher pitched roof, won't even come close to matching the existing structure that's on the property now. Um, if you look at the backyard, uh, from our property, which is the property to the east, uh, and talk about it being screened, uh, with trees, uh, those, uh, the half of the trees that are screening that particular structure are deciduous trees, will not have that screening ability during most of our Canadian winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, is there anything further from the public hearing committee?
Um, I guess I just have a couple of statements to make. I mean, I, for myself, I can't support it only on the basis that I think if planning wants to, I agree with the statement made, if you want to change the bylaw and the zoning for every, then it should be done on an equitable basis, and we shouldn't be handling these on a piecemeal approach. And, um, I think what you do, for one, you assume that you're going to do for all, and it will be precedent-setting, and so, if there's changes in the future that want, you want to look at, I think it should be done in, in the context of, is our zoning bylaw appropriate, and do we need to change it? And for myself, I can't support it on that basis.
Councilor Roberts?
I would like to, uh, through you, I'd like to move that we close the public meeting, so we can get into deliberations.
Well, the way that we have it set up now was just, Councilor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Hough. I just, too, would like to make a, a general comment coming out of the public meeting. Um, we heard many times about staff's endorsement on council's new strategic priorities, which I really look forward to finding in our agenda, and seeing how staff can take the strategic priorities we've created and endorse them, but just, um, as some feedback from me personally, that's not quite how I envisioned, um, you know, fostering, how does it read here? Foster vibrant creative communities. In my mind, I, I pictured parks and communities, I pictured recreation programs and services for the public. I don't necessarily associate that strategic priority with something like this, and, uh, you know, I, I certainly, we've had conversations about the tiny homes, and you, you brought a great report forward for council on tiny homes and secondary dwellings. So, again, just more feedback for you, um, as you, as you move forward with that. This doesn't, um, line up for me in that sense either, just so you're aware, I know that it's for entertainment purposes, but I think, as you do with each and every planning, um, application that comes your way, you, you address the surroundings and, and what makes that application unique. Um, this, for me, just, it's not, it's not driving, so, feedback, thank you.
Uh, so, I guess, general comments, um, the one point six meters, um, is five feet, three inches, so it isn't a small amount. I'm five-four in stature, um, fully grown man, almost fully grown man, um, so it is a lot larger than just a couple of feet, we're talking about, um, my size. Um, and I, I feel that it's, uh, it's not going to require the applicant, uh, to put in a flat roof, they can still have a pitch, and they're still going to be able to comply, uh, with the existing bylaw. Uh, I would like to move, if I may, at this juncture, for a deferral, for the application to go back to staff, uh, to meet with our existing bylaws. I'm not in favor of the relief, uh, that's being asked, both in the square footage of the usable floor area, nor in the height of the building, and I feel that that opinion has been expressed at nauseam, uh, this evening, through the correspondence we've had, uh, and verbally as well, and, uh, that is something I would like to table, if that's something I'm able to do at this juncture.
Okay, so in that case, then, I'll take that as you moving to close the public meeting, and then a second, or, Councilor Huffman, all those in favor, and that's carried, and... And that's carried, and then I'll let you do it.
And I'd be looking for a secondor for my deferral.
Council Taylor? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried.
It's Ontario's south coast, you know, and it's surely not remote. If you pass through, or spend a day, or decide to call it home, you'll see why we love it here and are proud to call it our own. Norfolk, Norfolk, a southern county home. Norfolk, Norfolk, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Norfolk, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Norfolk, Norfolk, my southern county home. Norfolk, Norfolk, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Norfolk, you won't be a stranger long. With hard work, we build a dream that only willing hands could do. It's on display at our fall fairs and at all the festivals too. Eerie beaches, Carolinian forests, where the flower and dogwoods bloom. Patchwork fields and rolling hills, it's just the place for you. Norfolk, Norfolk, a southern county home. Norfolk, Norfolk, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Norfolk, you won't be a stranger long. Norfolk, 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 you won't be a stranger long. On a strip of sandy soil lies a county called Norfolk. It's Ontario's south coast, you know, and it's surely not remote. If you pass through, or spend a day, or decide to call it home, you'll see why we love it here and are proud to call it our own. Norfolk, Norfolk, a southern county home. Norfolk, Norfolk, we know you can't go wrong. With the friendly folk of Norfolk, you won't be a stranger long. Taking the small-town atmosphere, being amazed at all that we grow. Like our kids that go and see the world and can't wait to return home. Drop a line in a placid lake or stroll along the shore. Take a tour on a peaceful country road and found to be back for more. Of Norfolk, Norfolk, my southern county home.
Everyone, if we're ready to get going again? So we just had a little conversation up here. I know most people are here for the cannabis, but I just, we want to do a little bit of house cleaning. I think there was a little bit of some confusion based on, kind of, we're still working through different scenarios here, when we had denied what perhaps should have at one point in time been a deferral and so on. So my understanding from what I'm hearing from council is that you are unlikely or not interested, Council Rabbits, the purpose of your motion was that if they build to the 55 square meters, which is permitted within the zoning, and to the maximum height of five meters, then they don't need any kind of variance or relief from the zoning bylaw. And so anything beyond that, my understanding is you're not interested in entertaining.
Thank you. This would be correct. That was the intent of my motion, was to eliminate the seeking of relief for both the square footage and the height. Ideally, it wouldn't be coming back before this council if they were to comply with the bylaw, which would make the meeting process move at that juncture in time. Having said that, I don't have a crystal ball. I have no idea what's going to result from the deferral, whether the applicant is going to go from a height of, say, my size, to a foot or an inch. I should really stop using myself as measuring stick, shouldn't I? But, you know, I don't know what's going to come back. Maybe they'll pull it entirely, and so I'm hoping that by deferring it, staff will have an opportunity to speak with the applicant in that regard. Really, the, you know, the intent isn't necessarily to, is to refuse the relief portion, but this is a negotiation. I don't know what's going to come back before us here. We could be talking about a matter of inches. So, you know, I don't want to muddy the waters further. We could very well have moved to refuse it, but I thought that, you know, there's another out there. There is a potential for...
So just on that note, because we're going to have a conversation about this when the Meiser landing report would have shown up on the agenda, where are we on the timeline period for making a decision?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I'd have to check to see when the application was considered complete, and then we could figure out what the timelines are. We can provide that information for council for next week.
Okay. Council Columbus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This here is a public hearings committee, so is this decision final, or can it be pulled next week at the full council?
It can be pulled next week at council.
It can be pulled at the full council. How will the public be notified, and the applicant, the public be notified again of it being pulled and a final decision made next week?
Well, in any of them, in all cases, they, because the public hearings we were typically doing, well, sometimes they were at CIC, so they still would have been, have to be ratified. The public is aware that the decision hasn't been ratified. So whether it was under the previous scenario or this scenario, it's not ratified until we have council meeting. So I don't know that it's our obligation, our obligation was to notify them of the public hearing. There wouldn't be a chance to speak to it again.
So really, if Council Rabbits pull it for next week's meeting, we could vote again on this subject?
My proposal was going to be to pull it right now, and to make, if your intention was not to do that, to just make the decision this evening, and then ratify it in the bylaws next week. But that's your thoughts with that? Which...
It can be pulled and denied next week?
Okay. Okay, moving on then. Okay, so next is staff report, DCS 19-79. That's an application that's been received to request relief from sections 3.21 of the Norfolk County zoning bylaw 1Z-2014, to permit a cannabis production and processing use without air treatment control to be 86.7 meters away from an adjacent single detached dwelling, whereas the bylaw requires 300 meters. Rich Sun Investments and Agent Urban in mind to put forth the application affecting the lands described as 5148 Highway 3. I'd now like to open the public meeting upon staff report DCS 19-79. And Mr. Vaughn, if you could please present your report, sir.
Thank you. While Shannon figures that out, the subject lands are on the south side of Highway 3, east of the hamlet of Renton. The lands are bordered by a number of rural residential lots on the east, south, and west. There is a horse ranch east of the subject lands, and there's an existing 18,580 square meter greenhouse. That's 4.59 acres on the subject lands. There is one single detached dwelling on site, as well as outdoor storage related to cannabis production and processing use. So this graphic before you just shows how the site is currently situated. So the subject development appears to be operating outside of the intent of the regulatory framework that governs its use. The intent of permitting registered personal medical or designated production facilities is for the medical use of cannabis for only four persons per address. The proposed development has created a significant source of land use conflict due to abnormal odor emissions that are affecting the adjacent rural residential dwellings. The development exhibits a land use pattern that's causing an environmental, public health, and safety concern for area residents. The request of an 86-meter setback from a sensitive land use does not provide adequate buffering for a cannabis production facility that does not have air treatment control, and therefore adds conflict to the adjacent sensitive land uses. I should say that there has been quite a bit of activity on behalf of the applicant over the course of, since we've received this application. We have met with area residents. We've given the applicant ample opportunity to bring the application and the facility into conformity with the bylaw, but at this point, it is still no longer in compliance with our zoning bylaw. And I should also mention that since the application was received, the applicant has progressed in purchasing several of the dwellings nearby, in an attempt to try, again, to bring their facility into compliance. To date, the facility does not have air treatment control, so therefore requires a 300-meter separation requirement. So it is, even with, from my understanding, the properties that have been purchased, it is still not in compliance with the zoning bylaw without air treatment control. At this point, the application is not consistent with the PPS or the intent of our official plan, and does not represent good planning, and planning staff recommend refusal.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Vaughn, so do you have any, I mean, I'll ask the applicant the same question, but why spend time purchasing properties nearby and not put the time and effort into putting in air treatment facilities?
That's a very good question, Mayor. It's, my understanding, the industry right now is incredibly busy, and they have made an attempt to purchase this equipment. It's just, hasn't been installed yet. Prior to the start of this meeting, the applicant did approach me and say that the equipment has now been purchased. It's on site. It's just a matter of having it installed. My understanding is they are going to give a presentation and may be requesting a deferral to give them more time, but we'll leave that in council's hands.
And how long from the time when they were first notified to the time when they put an order in to purchase the equipment? I'm assuming we're talking about months?
Oh, absolutely, early spring. It's been quite some time.
Further questions from councilors to staff? Council Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor Chop. Through you to Mr. Vaughn. Mike, could you just confirm that at no point in time, from the beginning of the applicant moving into this property, and the cannabis operation starting, and today's date, September 10th, have they ever been in compliance?
Through the mayor, to Council Huffman, that's correct. They have not been in compliance.
Okay. So fair enough to say that everything was... So, fair enough to say that everything was pretty straightforward when they, I don't know if they relocated to Norfolk County or they're from here, but when they got this property, we had setbacks in place and things like that. So, there's, so it was pretty clear. It wasn't that we changed rules along the way or anything like that.
Through the mayor to Counsel Houghman, our provisions in our zoning bylaw regarding cannabis production and processing were in place prior to them purchasing the property.
Okay. Does the applicant or agent wish to speak?
My name is Terrence Glover for Road and Mine Planning Consultants. I'm here to represent the owner. The owners asked me to speak on their behalf because English is their second language, and this can be quite intimidating for people who aren't used to this. So, I just first like to say that, that everything that Matt said is true. The one thing to add to that, though, is, again, the owner's not from this area. It is true that they started operation not in compliance. As soon as they found out, they brought me on board because, I mean, this is my industry, not cannabis, but planting is my industry. And we went through the process to try to figure out how to resolve these issues. We applied for the zoning amendment, for the reduction, really, to be true with you, for a buffer period, so that we can get the installation of the carbon filters, we can get the light abatement and everything in place, so that we won't even need a zoning amendment. Excuse me. We anticipated there would be a refusal of this application, but again, it was to allow time to get everything in place. We met with the public, four separate meetings on the same day. We addressed, we actually, we heard a lot of comments from the public, the neighbors that surrounded. We took it to heart, and because of that, we put a lot of things in motion. Most recently, about a month ago, I talked to Mr. Vaughn, and he asked me where we stood on this project. And I said, to that time, I don't know where we stand. I haven't heard from the client. He said, in that case, we have to bring this forward to council because this is a continuing issue. I said, I appreciate that, and I understand your position. What I didn't know at that time was, behind the scenes, the owner was going about purchasing and marketing, not marketing, purchasing, and looking at different areas, how to solve the odor problem, how to solve light problem, et cetera. In addition, they are also moving towards a licensed production facility as opposed to a medical licensed production facility. So, that will be able to employ local residents, et cetera. They've actually began construction on the facility to change it to a licensed facility under Health Canada. Under Health Canada licensing, there's more strict odor requirements, light requirements, et cetera. So, they're moving towards that. In the interim, the client has bought carbon filters to put on the facility. We have, they haven't been delivered yet. They should be delivered next week, and then we have installation. So, on that basis, we acknowledge that there is an issue here. We acknowledge that it's ongoing. What we do is we ask for a little bit more time, and I would suggest two council sessions, for us to be able to get our things in place, so that we can even withdraw the application at that time. So, two sessions before the council makes a decision. Excuse me. To talk about the properties that the neighbors purchased, on either side, actually, the little square, do you have my PowerPoint there, by chance? If you could fast, advance that, please. Again? Okay, so this was the setback requirements. The hatched area is the area that's beyond 150 meters. That was with the two corner houses that were in the property. Since that time, the applicant has purchased the property to your right, if you're looking at it, and they have purchased essentially the property to the left, that corner out of the square. That one to the left is not closed until January 10th, but it is, it is processed, essentially. Another fact is the property to the west of that property out of the square, the corner of the square, the owner is negotiating with the owners of that property to purchase that property as well. I understand negotiations have just started, but they're progressing actively. Nonetheless, even if they don't buy that property, with the new facility, with the air treatment, et cetera, we will be in conformity with the bylaws at that time. So, given all that, we're moving towards purchase these properties around us. It's an agricultural area where agricultural industry is promoted in your county. It's an unusual industry. It's a new industry, and there are some growing pains with it, both from the producer's side as well as the resident's side. In these growing pains, we're trying to mitigate the issue. We're trying to be productive and be good citizens, now that the owner understands the situation they're in. They're moving towards a licensed producer, which is very strict in terms of the requirements, so there should be no nuisance after that. And in the meantime, we also have the carbon filters, which we're installing, I think, next week, within one or two weeks from now, and they should be fully in place within 30 to 45 days. So, on that basis, I ask council to please defer your decision this evening for two council cycles, and if that time, we haven't met all your obligations, then shut us down. But allow us that time to solve this problem, to maintain the agricultural industry, to allow the farmer to continue and to upgrade the facility. I also point out that we invite building staff to come to the facility, as early as tomorrow, we can arrange the timing, to see that we actually have the construction underway, so that we're not just blowing smoke. Thank you very much.
So, a couple of questions. Is there an application on file for a licensed producer? Because they all have to provide notice to the municipality, and I don't require this ever, recall it coming across my-
I believe they just, I believe it's filed. Let me just, if I can- So, the application was just sent in. You wouldn't have received notice yet?
So, in order for it to be sent in, notice has to be provided to the municipality prior to the application being submitted to Health Canada. It's actually one of the requirements of the application. And unless somebody didn't bring me my mail, which I don't think happened, I never received the notice here at the municipality, so that can't be true.
So, what I've been informed is that the owner can provide that notice to you?
The owner would have had to have provided the notice to me prior to submitting-
To the application?
-the application to Health Canada. So, an application has not been submitted.
Okay. I apologize on that.
Okay.
They, I've seen the application, so they're moving forward, so I apologize if I-
Well, I can print an application off and see an application, too. So, next question is, did you bring an invoice for the air treatment control that you have purchased?
Yes, one second. May I approach?
Sure. Feel like I'm Judge Judy right now. And how many square feet is this?
Fifty thousand, five zero.
Fifty thousand square feet. So, 50,000 square feet, you've got 10 filters that you've purchased for a total of 3,700.
That's the first shipment.
Okay. So, I know a little bit, despite the media report that says, almost suggesting I'm not a supporter of the cannabis industry, I'm actually a huge supporter of the cannabis industry, and I know a little bit about it. And 10 carbon filters at 3,700 bucks is not going to filter a 50,000 square foot facility.
Correct.
So, despite the fact that this was ordered, what's today, two days ago?
Mm-hmm.
That's a little bit hard for me to swallow at this point, when we have, do you understand how many hours that this council fields phone calls and emails of complaints from residents? I mean, it's out of, like, it's a time suck when, if it was a designated producer that was existing somewhere out in a field, and I don't know about it, because I'm not getting complaints on it, because nobody can smell it or see it, then I don't think this council would have a problem with it, because that's the federal government's issue to deal with. But when you put it next to a home, and now it becomes our problem because we have all these people sitting here, that's the case where I have a problem with it. So, perhaps instead of buying up all these additional properties, why not look at buying a property that's out of sight and out of mind and not causing us all these challenges? Because 3,700 bucks isn't going to cut it for an air filtration system for a 50,000 square foot facility.
If I may respond to that, Madam Mayor. So, the reason we only ordered them yesterday is, is in, Matt can attest-
But you've known about the complaints from Norfolk County for months.
Granted, that's what I'll speak to. So, Mr. Vaughn can attest that, that we, I've informed him and we sent him information about the greenhouse providers and air filtration systems a few months ago. We didn't understand at that time that there is a backlog in the system, first off, to get greenhouse providers to, we found one from the States, which has to ship things up here. We found one in St. Catherine's.
Did you bring the emails with you?
Mr. Vaughn has seen these emails, if he can attest to those, that there is, there is a lag period, first off, and then the cost of it was extraordinary as well. The applicant has found this third way, actually, the fifth way, I think it was, to solve the problem by these carbon filters. They've just started to order it because, again, this, we didn't appreciate how long this was going to take to resolve.
Okay. So, then let me ask it this way. So, if you have somebody that is not from, a resident of Norfolk County, and they have come here and they want to set up a business, and they are aware of a bylaw that we have in place, would the first thing you did, not before you opened the business, would be to ensure that you had all your ducks in a row, and you had all the approvals that you needed, and you had all the filtration systems that you needed, and then you went and did that? Would that not be the approach that you would take? Not be in clear violation of our bylaws and have us all endure this for months on end, and then come to council and ask us to grant relief when you haven't been able to abide by it for this long?
I would, being someone who understands the system and understands business in North America, I would totally agree with your position there. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case. So, once they, once the owners did understand-
So, once they did understand, why didn't they remove all of the plants and then get themselves in conformity, and then come and ask council for something?
It's my understanding that they had, they had obligations. They had to meet with the licensed growers, and I can't attest-
If they don't have obligations, a designated producer license is for four people, a maximum of four-
That's right.
-that is supposed to be for personal consumption.
That's right.
So, I don't know, I know nothing about the obligations that you could be referring to, other than it's supposed to be for their own personal consumption.
That's right. But the greenhouse is supposed to be set up for these producers. So, in saying that, you're correct, a normal rational person would have investigated all these matters. In this case, unfortunately-
A normal rational person would have bought a piece of property that's not near a home and gone and built their business somewhere that was the three, met the 300 meters if they didn't want to put in air control.
To be fair, that bylaw for the setbacks just came in 2018, I believe it was, just, I believe it was a few months or so before or after that it was purchased. I'm not saying necessarily when the production facility wanted to place, because I agree with the report that it started not in conformity. In addition, this is agricultural land. This is designated agricultural. So, your first premonition here of what you would do here would be to grow crops. Now, granted-
Don't go down that road, because I actually was the one that fought to keep this as an agricultural crop, but we still have a zoning bylaw that you still need to adhere to. So, don't screw that up for everyone else.
I'm a planner, so I appreciate that.
Because I fought for that. Counselor Houghman?
Thank you, Mayor Chop. Through you to the delegate agent. I'm getting confused here. So, I guess my question is, the, there was some confusion from the individual when they came here and started the business, but I just wanted to be clear for everyone here listening and watching at home, is that they would have applied for a license through Health Canada, correct?
I can't speak to that, but at that time, they were not. They were, they were medical producers. Only recently have they contemplated becoming a licensed producer.
Okay. My understanding, though, is that they still would have had to get some kind of licensing to be the grower, the designated grower for the individuals?
Yes, we have, there are four, and if I say "I," I'm not involved in this, I'm just the agent, but there are four-
Okay, it's legal.
There's four licenses active on the property, and there's up to 1,704 plants. I know that sounds like an extraordinary amount, but that has-
Oh, no, not only does it sound like an extraordinary amount, it is an extraordinary amount, so.
When you're thinking about how long that product has to last, that individual, and again, I'm not an expert in cannabis production. I'm an urban planner.
Right.
So, I'm going by my best knowledge of the cannabis industry. But the, as I've been speaking with people in the industry, that number is not unusual for license holders. That's total for all four.
Well, I'm not going to argue that fact at all. And the point would be is that, going back, if I'm going to go back and counting, it's been approximately eight months since this was first brought, in particular, actually, almost longer, probably close to nine months, that Counselor Martin and myself were both spoken to directly by residents in the very close proximity, and other residents who are dealing with another operation in their neighborhood. So, this has been nine months, and at that point in time, I can, I just want to confirm that the individual has purchased other properties-
Mm-hmm.
-but has not invested any money in any filtration system. Is that correct?
No, we have invested in the first order.
I'm not counting that. Are you talking about what was ordered yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to count that, because we're speaking of nine, like, nine months. So, no other major investment has occurred for this property, and I do want to ask you, when you said if in two sessions of council, using that timeline, if you weren't in compliance, shut you down, how would you propose we do that?
First off, there has been investment in that property. It hasn't been tangible. They spent thousands of dollars, me and other consultants, to try to figure out how to solve this problem. We've brought greenhouse providers and air filtration onsite. We've met with them. There has been additional costs that they have invested into this, whether it's physical tangible assets or not. The tangible-
But the crop never stopped. There was no stoppage in production of a crop at any point in time?
From my understanding, there was a delay between, but there was no, it was continuous, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Chop. Any answer to my question, how you propose we would shut you down?
Through your bylaw enforcement, I would understand that you would come in and issue an order to comply, because it would be an illegal use at that time, or at this time.
If I could ask-
I don't think in order to comply, I think, perhaps the staff can comment as to what's been issued so far.
Matt, are you able to answer that question? You know what? For this time, let's go ahead.
My understanding is that a notice of violation has gone out. I'm not certain on the status of this particular application after that. I don't know if the notice to comply or the next step in bylaw enforcement has been dealt with or not. But I'd have to defer that question to our building department.
Thank you for confirming, though, that there has been some ongoing dialogue with our bylaw department and-
The next, if I can clarify, the notice to comply is one thing, order to comply is the second. And then there's the appeal of the order and all the other stuff. If we, I mean, it could, okay.
Counselor Martin, we're going to move on.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Chop. I'd like to send this question through to Matt, actually. Are you aware of our building, relevant, are you aware of building department wanting to go out to the property at all, or visiting the property? I know bylaw.
Through the mayor, my understanding is that our bylaw officer is waiting to, well, for the outcome of this meeting.
Okay, thank you, just because of your invitation. So, do you know what the purpose is of the properties that have now been purchased? Do you know what the intent would be to use them for?
So, the primary purpose of that is to, is to increase the buffer area. So, right now, the bylaw speaks to, without air filter-
I do understand, sorry, I do understand that part. I mean, the actual dwelling. Is there any purpose? Will they be used for anything in particular?
If I may confer with the owner?
If I may leave you with my thoughts on that. It's absolutely terrifying to think that in a county that's dealing with troubles like this with the cannabis industry, that now we have growers coming to town and actually buying up neighboring properties that could potentially sit vacant, which is a whole other problem for this council to then sit and discuss what we do with that. So, I kind of got opposed to you by way of a question, but to be honest, I don't quite care what they do with it. I just don't necessarily agree with it. The last question I'd like to send your way, because again, I need to ask it by way of question. If you were to put, if you were to sit in my seat, what reputation do you think is better for this municipality? A reputation that would look at a project like this and look at deferring it by request of you to work- of you to work with a grower who has not worked with our staff or our residents, or a type of county that strives to have a reputation that, that would shut down something like this because they didn't ever follow the regulations that were set forward by us?
To answer that question, I think if you want to be a municipality that's, that's recognized as someone who supports agriculture and industry, especially the lack of, loss of tobacco and all these other things that are happening, you can scold, or you can, you can make it clear that this shall not happen again. Because we're so far down the way, because we're 45 days away from not requiring a zoning bylaw at all, if it's enforced, there's appeal periods, we'll still, to be fair, they're still going to meet that, that the crop is nearly done, the crop is, is going to be harvested within that period as well. So, you're going to ask them to destroy their crop, so it's a financial burden, or, not financial burden, sorry, it's, it's the growers' burden. You're going to have appeals and court costs and et cetera.
Sorry, I just want, how is it a financial burden?
Well, I assume you're going to have to have a lawyer or staff attend any appeals that are going to occur.
But, but they're not selling it, right?
Pardon me?
They're not selling it.
No, it's, it's, it's not a licensed producer as of yet.
Right, just checking.
So, so, anyway, so, so to answer your question, I think if it was me, sitting there, I would say that the proponent has said 45 days. If it's not resolved in 45 days, then of course, you have done, you have exhausted your generosity, in my opinion.
Just closing comment, thank you for that. Again, I kind of just had to pose it to you in a question, but I already have the answer, and I maybe wish that our staff should have said, and to no fault of our staff, but that the grower had 45 days, and instead, there was more time, and more time, and more time. Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chair.
How many plants did you see are housed at this facility?
I believe, from my information, it's 1,700 as of today.
Are these mature plants, or is there junior plants coming on?
No, I-
This is the total number of plants, whether they're transplants or-
It's one harvest. The, the, the plants, as I understand it, will be mature in, in about three weeks for, for harvest, and then that will be it for another eight months or so. So, there's no, as my understanding, there's no junior plants happening, that happens once the other harvest is done.
It's not like some operations that have-
You can only have 1,700 plants total, whatever the-
I understand that. Is your applicant, is the applicant attached to any other grow-ups in the county?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I apologize, I, I've been asked to speak on their behalf, so I'm just going to confer-
I appreciate that, thanks.
So, the, my information is they have no other affiliation with any other grow-ups in Norfolk County.
Thank you.
Counselor Columbus, or Vanpassen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think a couple of my questions have already been asked, but it does raise a bit of a point. If in three weeks, there's going to be nothing there, what do you need to defer for? Because they're not going to replant that without the proper paperwork in place and the proper filtration and the proper building. They wouldn't do that, would they?
I would, I would hope not, but that is, if, the processing, so the plants will be harvested, but it takes about three to four weeks to, to process that harvest. So, there is a period of time before everything's out the door, theoretically, you know, for that purpose. But in that meantime, we're getting the carbon filters, we have to install them, so we ask for two cycles because we don't know if we can meet in one cycle. It's going to be very, very close. I'd rather err on the side of caution in terms of meeting all the obligations and have two cycles of council.
I'd rather that you ask for permission first, not-
Absolutely.
-forgiveness later, but, now, my other question, you talked about 50,000 square feet. That when I read the report, it is 4.59 acres, times 43,560 comes out in my mouth, a little bit more than 50,000 square feet. So, which is the planned use on this structure?
Just one second, let's see if I have my notes here. Again, I'll confer with the owner, I was advised 50,000.
50,000.
The large parcel at the back, at the side or at the back is 50,000, the small area to the side is about 20,000, so about 70,000 roughly, and that's not an exact figure.
So, can I jump in there with that 70,000? So, would you be willing to go back to the facility right now with a bylaw officer, to the facility, and, and you would be able to show us that there was only 1,740 plants in the facility right now? Would you stake your personal reputation on that?
Well, I, I didn't go and count them, that is what I've been informed. Let me just see if the owner is agreeable to that. They are agreeable to that if you defer it for two, to, they can come out today or tomorrow and count the plants, if you can defer it for two cycles of council.
Well, it's not a negotiation in terms of deferring it, but, okay, here's the next one in terms of deferring it then, since, since your creative solution. How about you guys post a $100,000 bond to cash to Norfolk County, and we'll give you 45 days to get into compliance, but if you're not in compliance in 45 days, the $100 grand stays in Norfolk County and your operation gets shut down.
So, I haven't, I can't make that kind of commitment, but what I can do, what I can do, I, everything that I've been told, that should be fine, but my client here is not the owner, she's a, a grower. The owner is not present, but if I, if you allow me, I mean, how do you do this without delaying the cycle? If you allow me a few days to talk to the owner of the property, I can, I can see if that's possible. Everything that I've heard from the owner is they would probably, that may be possible.
Well, if it may be possible, and they're, they're willing to do all this stuff, and they're willing to buy properties, how can you show up with an invoice for 10 carbon filters from Shepherd Avenue in Scarborough? This isn't a backlog on carbon filters, I mean-
My information, that was the first order that they, they submitted. So, that's what they, they had on hand, they gave that to me.
You need a little more than 10 carbon filters for 70,000 square feet of pot plants.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate honestly the frustration, I appreciate the, the pain and suffering of the neighbors, I appreciate the dismay of this, and I appreciate council's position on this matter while you represent the public. Saying all that, there's a solution here, if we can allow 45 days, everything will go away. If, if we don't allow two cycles, in my opinion, it continues the problem and it magnifies the problem, which no one, no one really gains from that.
What's the setback requirement with air treatment?
150 meters.
Do you meet that?
We will with the two properties purchased and air filtration.
And the deals have gone through?
The, so, the one deal to, if you look at that map, to the right has gone through, the other deal has gone through, it closes on January 10th.
So, is that true, that they will meet all the setback requirements if, for full air filtration?
One, one other, if I may point out, there's the corner of that property, because we don't have the survey on the, the, one to the next of it, that we're, we are in the process of, or the owners in process of purchasing as well. If we don't have that in time, they're going to knock out the little corner, about three feet meters of that corner, just to make sure the 150 meters is, is there. So, they will be in conformity.
To you, the mayor, there's just one little slight issue with that. So, that works as long as those properties are merged with this principal property, so provided the names are put in the same title and everything else, then they would merge. However, the property on the left was created by way of a severance. So, the way the planning act works is if a property is created by way of a severance, the only way to merge it back in is to change the lot fabric, and the only way to do that would be through a boundary adjustment application, which will likely take longer than 45 days.
But theoretically, though, they would have the 150, if, if they could all be tied together.
Through the mayor, if they continue to acquire all the properties around them, theoretically, they could not have a problem.
Counselor Vanpassen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was going to be my question to staff. According to our bylaw, doesn't matter who owns that property, if it's a separate property and it has a residential use, it has to be a minimum 150 meters or a minimum 100, or 300 meters, doesn't matter if they own it. Couple of them are across the Highway 3, so I doubt they can merge in title with the existing property. So, unless they, I guess they could always bulldoze the property and have it vacant, maybe, and that would eliminate that, that need for separation, that's the only option, really, isn't it? Because there are, residents are 86.7 meters, 110.7, 161, so there's at least two of them within the 150 meter, if they have a full complete vent filtration system, but I've never yet heard of a filtration system that works on a plastic greenhouse. It only works in a fully enclosed structure. I don't care if they've got 10 filters or not.
Never had a council meeting like this, have you?
I usually sit on the other side of the table, so.
Okay, so maybe if we could have you take a seat, and we'll allow some other people the opportunity to speak. So, first of all, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? So, before we move on to those that wish to speak in opposition or in general, it's 5:30, we know everybody's viewpoint, I think you can all get the sense from council of where we stand on this, so if we could, you know, keep it short and sweet, you can also sign your name to the paper, but again, we can't have repetition of the same issues from one to the next. We, we sympathize, I think it's clear, so, Stephanie will pass around a sheet, so you'll be able to sign your name and preserve your rights to appeal, but from then, if you could come forward, and if the next one could just be kind of lined up and ready to go, that'd be great. So, if you'd like to state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Maria Kinkle, I'm a lawyer here with MHN Lawyers. I'm here on behalf of a number of neighbors. We came together, we didn't want to bore you with 10 of the same presentations, so that we could be concise and to the point. So, one of the things, we are 100% in support of what the planner's position on this application is. County has done its homework, they've done the review as to what's necessary in preparing and coming up with this bylaw, and the distances are appropriate and fair, and there's no need for relief, in our opinion. The facility in question was converted sometime after December of 2018, so this bylaw came in effect in March of 2018. They purchased the property in December of 2018. So, I'm a real estate lawyer, typically, we do a full zoning check. If a client advises us as to their particular use for that, we would look into that and give our opinion with our report as to your need for compliance, and if you're able to use that property and that, and what requirements you'd have to meet. And then with respect to the properties that they are purchasing around there, that was one of the points I wanted to bring up. As a real estate lawyer, so far, what I'm seeing on the titles is that they're taking title in different names. So, they are retaining them as separate parcels, and they are not being merged into this property. And the way the bylaw reads now, there's an exemption for onsite dwelling, which is in the same lot. So far, what they've purchased is being kept separate, it's a separately conveyable parcel, so you're still dealing with two parcels. One of my concerns is it may be a method of acquiring more 911 numbers to maybe increase the ability to be a designated grower for more licenses.
That's all my comments. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I just would like for the, the last speaker, if they could state for the record the parties that they're representing. Often, we'll have folks come forward and say they're representing a group-
I think Stephanie's, I think she's passed around the, she's passed a sheet around for design.
Okay.
Anyone else? No? 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 Okay, Counselor Vanpassen.
Further to Counselor Rabbit's comment, I think you're also a neighbor right here. You're wearing two hats today, right? Downwind enough that you can smell it?
Okay, if I could have a motion to close the public meeting then. Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Taylor, all those in favor? And that's carried. Counselor Rabbit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move staff's recommendation on page 86 of our report, page 12 of 12 of DCS 19-79, that the application be refused.
Seconded by Counselor Taylor. Any further discussion? Counselor Vanpassen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant's agent was here asking for just another 45 days, but I think we've already given him about 180. But what can we do, other than we can pass this motion and approve it, and they can appeal it, but what can we do to make sure that they don't go and plant another crop?
Well, that's why I'd like to take a $100,000 bond, and then we pocket it in 45 days, and then use that to litigate. Perhaps maybe the applicant's agent could come forward again?
I think the goodwill of the applicant is all we-
So, given, I mean, you're getting the sentiment from council here, I mean, I, now that you're seeing that it's being likely to be denied here by council, is your client going to go and cease their operations?
I can't comment on that, you'd have to make a decision, and we would, I, I would expect that there's a legal process to go through, and they've invested a considerable amount of money on buying properties, hiring staff, that they wouldn't just forego that and, and sacrifice their crop as well, which will be theoretically ready in three weeks. So, I think they would do everything they could possibly to, to maintain that crop. That's my intuition. Just for the record, I'd like to point out that since I came on board, that they have been working progressively to try to solve this problem. I can't speak to what happened before I came aboard.
Why didn't you come on, why didn't they find somebody before, before now?
I, I can't, I can't speak to that, I don't know. I know that I was asked to come board to help solve this problem, and, and I've been working with staff to, to try to refine a resolution. Staff have informed me of the frustration council has had and the neighbors have had. It comes down to timing. We're, we're at the, the, I was going to use a baseball metaphor, but I don't understand innings anymore, I haven't played in years, but we're at the, the final stages of this. We need just a little bit more time to resolve things. If we don't hit that window, then, then from my point of view, sure, shut them down. If, if you shut them down theoretically, if you refuse this today, there's an appeal process, there's all this to go through, it just causes more angst. 45 days to my, to me, as a, as a planner and someone who negotiates things, seems reasonable. I appreciate that it's been an extended period of time, and it's frustrating, but from a solutions point of view, it's the best solution, in my opinion.
You can understand why we don't have that much faith in this solution.
Absolutely, I absolutely understand.
Counsel, Counselor Rabbit, would, just, I know it's a little unorthodox, but would you hear me out with maybe a suggestion? We have seven days until our next council meeting, which is when this decision would be ratified anyway. So, given that, I'm certain that we will end up litigating this in the courts to have them removed, should the application be denied by council, and I- be denied by council, and I, although I would hope that you would realize that you were in contravention of our bylaws and shut down your operation and find a piece of property where you conformed to the bylaws.
I didn't cut you off. I just want to say, as my role, I can only advise. I agree with everything you're saying, but I can only advise.
Right. So to my earlier suggestion, that might be a bit unorthodox, given that I'm sure we'll end up spending probably six figures litigating this, would you then post a bond held here at Norfolk County, the full amount? You can ask your client between now and the next council meeting if they would post a hundred thousand dollar bond to be held in trust that would be lost should the full odor filtration systems not be completely in compliance in forty-five days?
So in thinking of that, I understand you're a lawyer as well. There may not, under the municipal act, there may not be that mechanism to allow municipality to hold the bond and then obtain the bond. It may be outside the municipal powers.
That's quite possible, but perhaps there's a way to creatively do it.
I think that would set an awful precedent for you as well as municipalities across Ontario if that was to be the case. It'd be very dangerous, double knife to slide down, I guess.
Well, I just don't think, it's not even realistic. It's not realistic that you're going to have full odor filtration in forty-five days. Not when you have an order for ten carbon filtration systems for a seventy thousand square foot facility. So basically, you're right. It's throwing a hundred thousand dollars out the window because we know it's not going to happen. So I guess the other option is you realize that you are in contravention of the bylaw right now, and you go and you remove all of the plants, and a bylaw officer goes tomorrow morning to count the seventeen hundred and forty plants, and you shut the operation down immediately, given that there is no financial loss because you're not selling any of it, and then get yourself into compliance, and then come back and have a conversation with council once you've demonstrated that you have substantial odor filtration systems that have installed in the facility.
I appreciate your suggestion. That, in my opinion, that would mean destroying the crop. You can't just move seventeen hundred matured plants very easily. And also, as I understand, temperature control, humidity control, that would cause the plants to spoil. Again, that's my uneducated opinion of what I understand. I know enough to be dangerous, I guess. But again, what I would, I would circle back, and I say, as per your own admission, this was, this could be a very costly and lengthy process. The easy out, I guess, is to allow forty-five days. That's a mitigated settlement, in my opinion. The client, the owner, has obviously proven that money's not an obstacle that most people would face.
Then go buy a farm where you're away from everybody and do it somewhere else. I'm sure I can find you one for sale at MLS in Norfolk County right now that has a three hundred meter setback, and you will not have any neighbors that you're disturbing, and you guys can continue to do your legal growing but not selling through Health Canada under a designated producer license, and we don't have this problem.
If you can advise us on that property, they may set up their second, their second facility at that location. They may, they may want to expand, obviously, because Norfolk County and Haldeman County, et cetera, haven't, haven't prohibited this type of use.
Counselor Van Passen.
If we're going to be putting, like negotiating some conditions, back in the day when marijuana was not legal, anytime the police found some growing in the bush, they always valued it at about a thousand dollars a plant, right? So I was just doing the math. I want to meet the four people who smoke up one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of marijuana every year. I would be impressed.
Do you respond through you, Madam Mayor? We can arrange that if you want.
Counselor Abman.
Thank you, Mayor Chopp. Through you too. First off, Counselor Van Passen, I haven't heard the term "smoke up" in like a very, very, very long time. A little reminiscent there of Cheech and Chong or something. I wanted to go back. There was one question that I had earlier, and I didn't get a chance to ask it. How many employees are there at this facility?
There's four right now, the owner, operators. If they become a licensed facility through Health Canada, a licensed producer, I guess, I understand that there's a ability to hire people to be employed there, and that would be local people.
So there are no local people that are employed that receive paychecks and things like that at this current facility?
Well, there are four local growers. They, I believe they live in the area, but there's no paid employees. No. They grow their own crops.
Okay, I'm sorry. That makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Can I clarify the confusion?
So the people who are growing their plants on this property are from this area?
Well, they live here now because they're, they're at the facility daily.
Oh.
So, so they're still citizens of Norfolk, whether they're new citizens or old.
Okay, but they're not employees?
No.
Okay. So there are no employees. There are no jobs. There's no financial benefit to Norfolk County in any way, shape, or form?
So I stand corrected. There's a maintenance person that helps with the lands, to manage the lands around it. So that's a part-time position. So essentially, there's no employment currently. When it becomes a licensed producer, then that's when we look for employment.
Okay, you don't even have a license application for a licensed producer. So let's not talk about the LP just yet.
Okay, and I, yeah, I just wanted to finish too, is I just want to go back to your comment that you spoke about this being costly and timely for, for the applicant. I can't begin to express to you as a member of Norfolk Council and the residents of Norfolk County how costly and timely this has been for them. This has been months and months of something that they never asked for. So I don't feel that we are in a position, I don't, I don't feel that we're, we need to barter. I don't feel that we need to come up with any kind of solutions, and that it's shut down. And then when things are ready to be compliant, you can contact our planning department, and they can come out and inspect and then possibly start things back up. But I, I think it just needs to be done and over with, and I'm, I'm done being patient. So.
Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Terrence, we heard earlier from the lawyer that the properties that were purchased, the abutting properties, are in different names other than Rich Sun Investments. Wonder if you can speak to that, as to why that's happening that way? Who is the principal of Rich Sun Investments? I understand that this person at the back is just a manager. Okay, one of the managers? Or growers, is that it? Or does she represent the whole group? Can you give us some material around how that operation actually exists? Is the, Rich Sun Investments, are they out of British Columbia or where? And who is the actual proprietor behind the whole project?
So my understanding is Rich Sun Investments own the property, own the greenhouses, and the licensed producers grow their crop at these greenhouses. I'm going to preface this by saying, the language may be slightly off. The intent and the context, you have to give a little bit of leeway. Can you advise Rich Sun Investments who they are, what your role is?
Okay, I'll try to put it clearly, okay? Because I just understand some of your talks just now. You mean our corporation? I am just the officer of the corporation and one of the grower. And the others, the workers, are all growers. I mean, the license holder. So totally four, including me. And our boss is from Toronto. I cannot see his name. He's from Toronto, yeah. He owned the property. We just used a place to grow marijuana for medical use. Like me, I did surgery on my ankle, so I need marijuana to come down. Yeah, just that.
Just to clarify, you have a doctor's note to allow you to do that, correct?
Yes, of course, of course. That's why. We grow marijuana here. And later, I just want to explain something to you. We received the letter from county like six months ago about that. As soon as we received that, we tried to find a solution. The distance, the first problem, we tried to contact our neighbors to know what the concerns, and then we buy their property because they offer us the opportunity. So we said, okay, good, if you, yeah, have the willing, we are willing to buy the property too. And for the odor control system, we bought it, you will see, three months ago. That's in June. The sales invoice shows June ninth of this year, when we installed ten. We bought ten before because that's what the store had that time. We ordered totally fifty, the carbon filter system. And the others are still in, how to say, manufacturing. And then we heard from our boss, they need to apply for the, as a licensed producer. Then we will try to reach the requirements from the Health Canada. It's much more stricter than the county laws. So we say, okay, why not? We do better. So we need some time to improve all the odor system. That's why we just installed ten. Yeah, at the, how to say, the left hand, the first triangle, we, you can see three of them. That's the part, because that's closer to the other neighbors. So we just installed that part, that later we find, okay, we can do maybe some, something different. So we stop here and show you the invoice. Okay, and I don't know what else you want to know. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor from Counselor Rabbit, seconded by Counselor Taylor. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? And that's carried. So the application has been denied. Couple suggestions that I would have are perhaps look for a property in Norfolk County that meets the setback requirements. It is sixteen hundred square kilometers down here, and there's plenty of places to be able to grow that don't interfere with all these people's lives. It's, again, it's not that this council isn't a supporter of cannabis. We are. But this can't continue where you're in clear violation of our bylaws that we have created to protect our residents. The other suggestion that I have is if you are applying for a licensed producer license, Health Canada doesn't just do a transition from a designated producer to an LP. You remember the one that was in the news recently, right, where they had the fake wall, one of the big LPs, and they were growing plants in the back? Because in order to pass the Health Canada sort of inspection evidence requirements, they have to come in and inspect the facility, and it has to be empty. There can't be any plants in it. So if you want to have a good relationship with this council going forward, I would suggest shutting the operation down and getting the plants without us having to go through a long arduous court procedure, and perhaps we will be, you know, able to work together in the future should you get a licensed producer license and you follow the regulations. But if we have to spend months litigating this, we're probably not going to be getting off to a good foot.
If I may address you, I will definitely give my, my employer the proper referral, I guess, or the advice. And I think what you're saying is sound. But again, I only provide advice.
Okay. But, and also, you still won't mind, though, a bylaw officer going out tomorrow morning to check the plants?
We're not willing to entertain anything at this time because we've been refused. So it will, it will either shut down the facility or we'll go through the appeal process. It's up to the, it's up to the owner.
That's what I figured. Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Why not?
Why do they want to do an autopsy and also tell a cancer patient?
Well, that part, I don't know if I agree with you. I actually do believe in the cannabis piece. Cannabis has apoptotic properties. That means it even has the ability to target cancer cells. So I think there's a lot of science out there that shows it's actually probably better for you than some of these other drugs that are out there. So that part, I don't know if I agree. But I agree that you should be able to live in peace without having to smell it every single day. Two seconds. So we just have one thing. If we could get everybody to clear out, because we just have one five-minute little discussion, and then our meeting's actually going to be. Okay, if we could kind of clear everybody out so we could just get on and finish our meeting up? Order in the court. Okay, so I just want to, I know that the application, the final application has been pulled by the applicant. First, kind of quick, real question before I get into what I have to say. I'm just wondering, there's only one name on the application as it was put forward in this report. Have the names of the applicants all been changed, or is it just, because it was always three previously? Are we down to just one? Was there a change?
To you, the mayor, I don't think so. Was it different on the appeal form or something like that?
On the, on the, in the actual report itself?
Oh.
Was just one, one name, and it's always been three.
I'm not sure about that. I don't have the application form with me, just because I didn't know we were discussing it.
If you could do me a favor, just from a legal perspective, I'm actually curious as to how that change occurred and so on and so forth along the way. So the miser landing application, we became aware, has been withdrawn for council's failure to make a decision within the proper timeline. The concern that I had- The concern that I have is that Counselor Martin and Counselor Van Passen and I were both told, as recently, when we were at AMO, and I had made several inquiries, that we were in fact, close to the times, but we were not over. So, I guess, part of my problem here, right now, is that the public rights have been compromised by us exceeding these timelines. And I'm just wondering, given that Mr. Schlang had told me that he contacted staff, if perhaps we might be able to have a comment on, sort of, what we can do, at the very least, to ensure that going forward, with no other application, that we, again, compromise, compromise the rights of, of the public? Because right now, nobody's getting a chance to speak on an application that they should have had a chance to speak on.
To the mayor, just for this one specifically, I know we wanted to bring it sooner, but then, there was so much public input, that I know Harry directed us to do a different, longer public process. So, that's kind of what happened with this one.
But see, Harry was told that we weren't, we didn't exceed the timelines, because that's what Harry told each of us when we asked.
Yeah. Harry didn't tell, I, I didn't hear that from Harry, but the Planning Act did change this summer, so the timelines are now ninety days for zoning by law amendments, which is very difficult to meet. We usually wouldn't get an appeal.
Okay, so, though, hang on, Alicia, under this application, it would have been, it started under the old regime, so it still would have been subjected to the old timelines, not to the new timelines.
Right. But going forward, we'll have to just work really hard, I guess, to get it in the ninety days. Usually, an appellant wouldn't, or an applicant wouldn't appeal, because it takes so much longer to get through the LPAT process. I think this might be the first, at least the four years I've been here, it's the first appeal we've had like this.
Any other comments there, Shannon?
Just three, Mayor, and further to it, Alicia has kind of commented here. As she indicated, typically, we don't see a lot of these appeals, again, as well. For me, this is a first appeal of this nature, that has come forward. In terms of the processing, typically, as long as we're, the applicants and whatnot are working with us, and we've got open in communications, and that, that we can tell the applicants that the applications are being processed, that normally satisfies it, and we kind of keep going through, through that, because it does normally take significantly longer to get through any sort of LPAT, or even under the previous OMB regime. Alicia is correct, in terms of the Planning Act timelines, and an effort to, to speed things up, have been reduced from one, they were originally ninety, a few years ago, they were increased to a hundred and fifty, to allow for the opportunities for some additional consultations, so that developers weren't just automatically putting in these types of appeals. With that, it is going back to ninety days, so there is, we will be, have to be cognizant of applications kind of going forward. I, typically, we wouldn't see an appeal of this nature, and in terms of going forward, and with some of our reports and whatnot, we can include some of those timelines for council, if that's the desire, in terms of...
I'm starting to think, maybe what we need, something is some kind of a, you know, an Excel spreadsheet, that as applications come in, you know, some kind of document the council has access to, that we can see the application started at this day, and it needs to be by council, to council by this day, because this, I mean, this just can't happen for an appeal on, on this basis, on a project of this magnitude, that has the potential to impact an entire community. The fact that, you know, we're not receiving public consultation tonight on this, or public input, rather, is, it's, it's pretty tough. I certainly know, you know, Counselor Martin's feeling the heat and pork over, right now. I guess the other question that I have, just because we have never seen this before, I don't believe it's ever been used in Norfolk County before, is also surrounding the use of Section thirty-seven. I just, I made some phone calls, and I spoke with some planners in some other jurisdictions, and they told me that, in fact, generally, when a municipality uses Section thirty-seven, that it's really, it's a kind of a negotiation with council, because, you know, we're looking at significant trade-offs are typically involved. So, they're wanting a big concession, and as a result, it's really council's decision to see how much they're willing to, you know, accept in exchange for that sort of leeway, and that, that's not generally kind of a, a planning-led sort of negotiation. So, I'm just wondering if you anticipate using this Section thirty-seven in the future again, or if we need to kind of come up with some sort of guidance from council, and how that might look down the road?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, I don't foresee this becoming a regular occurrence, with use of this, and if I'm not mistaken, and I'd have to, to double-check this, but I do believe there is some discussion or movement that this will be taken out of a planning tool, so that it wouldn't be kind of an option that way, going forward anyways.
So...
But there also, like, we do have some policies in our official plan right now, that speak to this opportunity, and if it is so council's desire, we can look at, at doing an amendment to remove those, so that it's not an option that is available to Norfolk County.
Well, I think, like you just said, I think Bill one oh eight is going to remove it all on its own, but just a final question, so has this ever been used before?
I am not aware of this situation being applied in the past.
Any further questions from councils? Councilor Martin? Thank you, Mayor Chop. Thank you for addressing this, because I too, just wanted to really draw light on the fact that the community is upset that they have missed this, the community that's aware that it's happened are upset that they've, they've missed this public hearing process, and to quote one person in particular, they feel as though this project has found a loophole to avoid that. So, I just would really like to publicly say that, and I agree with Mayor Chop, if we can create some kind of system to ensure that we're staying on top of it, and it doesn't happen, I think that that is the best way to just articulate to concerned members of the public, that we are trying to reduce, mitigate this in the, in the future. Thank you. So, I guess that's the end of our reports. If I have a couple motions each. Any general announcements from anyone? Anything? No? Okay. Councilor Abman?
I have just one, thank you for indulging me. We had an information package this evening, that did have some information from our Police Services Board and OPP costing, and it's an interesting read. If you go online, you'll see our information package, and it's a detailed report. And if you're reading into it, two thousand and sixteen was a good year for policing costs in Norfolk County. If you look at the average costs in Ontario, and the costs that we pay, we are above the provincial average, and I'm not going to give away all of my Easter eggs, you have to look at the report to find out why that was the best year recently, for policing costs in Norfolk County, and what the disparity was.
Thank you, Mayor Chop. I just would like to remind everyone, if you've forgotten, that it's Friday the thirteenth this week, so very special shout-out, and best wishes to all of our staff, our first responders, our EMS team, our roads department, going out there, making it happen, and I hope that everybody comes to town early, and spends lots of money, and drives home safely.